Are we good to go?
One minute, sure.
How are things up front? I guess, oh, there we go. Got thumbs up, all right, we're on the air. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Concord zoning Board of Adjustments' regular August meeting. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, for the most part. We will take each item as it appears in the agenda. We will ask the appellants to step forward, be sworn in and seated in the chairs to my right, and offer whatever testimony that they would like us to hear. We ask that if at all possible, they can find that testimony to a 10-minute interval. Following that, we ask the appellants to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard, first in favor of the appeal, and second, in opposition to the appeal. We request that those people confine themselves to a five-minute interval. Following that, we will check in with code enforcement to see if there are any comments related to the case, and if there have been any comments that seem to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new arguments, prior to our closing, the public testimony portion of the hearing. In most cases, the board will consider and act on each case prior to moving on to the next. This evening, we do have one variation on the theme, which is our first item under the public meaning listing in the agenda, is a request for rehearing. This is a request for rehearing of a case that we heard two months ago. Normally, we do not take testimony, but rather rely on written submissions from people who are making the request. In this case, the case is 24 Pierce Street, and we have two separate requests, one submitted by Joseph Scully, and one submitted by Todd Fahy, both of whom are requesting that we rehear the case. The criteria for granting a rehearing are that we must find that there is either factual information that's relevant to the decision that is available now, that was not available at the time that we heard the case, or that we have made an error in procedure or an error in law. Has everyone had a chance to read the request for rehearing?
We have a question about the minutes.
Okay.
I think, Jim does.
So, I'm reading, I'm trying to familiarize, refamiliarize myself with how we disposed of the case. And so, I went back and read the minutes, and I was a little confused based on the version I have here. It says that a motion to approve the special exception was made by Mr. Walner, seconded by Ms. Spencer Morgan, passing unanimously. And then it says, a motion to table the variance was made by Mr. Walner and seconded by Mr. Monahan unanimously. So, I just don't, I'm confused procedurally with what we did that night.
That doesn't sound right.
No, it doesn't. What page are the minutes on, sir?
Page seventeen of eighteen of the June 5th minutes.
I think the minutes that I read, which were online, indicated that there was a motion for table, which failed, three to two. And then there was a motion to grant, which was passed three to two.
Okay.
And I believe that you and Mr. Walner were in the minority in both cases.
Remember, this is, that's a draft.
Right, is that recall, I think?
Here's a corrected one, right here, yeah.
That's correct, okay. And the motion to table was so that we could have legal counsel answer some questions with that fail, right?
Yes, yes.
All right, I'm now familiar enough.
Sorry about that.
I don't, so how did we leave it the last time?
We granted the special exception.
So, these are neighbors saying they don't?
They, in both cases, they, I believe, are neighbors, and they're requesting rehearings.
Okay.
For the reasons they give in the memorandum that they submitted.
Right.
So, Mr. Walner?
I was still a little confused.
Pardon?
I was reading, but I'm still a little confused.
Is there something I can help you with?
I'll follow along.
Okay. Start with Nick. Nick, did you hear, read anything in either of the submissions that led you to believe that the criteria for especially, or excuse me, a rehearing had been met?
I don't think we made an error, nor did I see any new information submitted in the rehearing request.
Okay. Jim Monahan?
Yeah, I did, you know, I reviewed the petitions, and certainly, I think there's some information that came forward that those who opposed it didn't have at the time, particularly around the information around the number of police call-outs and things like that. I don't know that that would have been material to the limited scope of what we have to approve, but I've decided what I'm going to do with this. But my, at the time, I still felt as though the application was pretty weak in its representations, or didn't think there was enough of a record to get to a yes on it. And as you know, I was, also had concerns, although it's not raised here about trying to get a better understanding of the city's obligations under the Americans Disability Act when it comes to sober living communities. And there is a representation in at least one of the motions here that what was presented to us from the applicant regarding the Americans with Disabilities Act is not applicable. And I don't have enough information to know if that's accurate or not, so, you know, I would like to go back to where I was, which is asking the City's litis's office to review some of this with us, but I don't, I didn't prevail then, so, you know, I don't think we're revisiting that decision tonight.
Okay. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, you know, I was not on the board that night, however, I did read the minutes, as well as the, both of the requests for reconsideration carefully to try to match it up, and I don't, I don't see anything new that I think was material. So, I, I don't see any, any, I don't know how I would have ruled, to be honest, and I don't need to get that far, but I don't see any, anything new enough that would justify it to reopen.
Ms. Perkins?
Do the minutes say which way I voted?
I believe you voted in favor of the special exception.
Okay, yeah, I think that, you know, in the heart of it, I felt for the neighbors, but I had a hard time finding a reason to deny it. And I, I don't see that we didn't do anything clerically incorrect in our position as the zoning board, as much as I again feel for, you know, their position.
Actually, you voted, you voted against it.
I did, yeah, I wondered if I did, but.
Oh, so who were the three that voted for? I was one.
You, Ms. Spencer Morgan, and Mr. Walner.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I didn't think I had voted.
So, I was mistaken then about Nick being in the minority?
Missed last month, so if it happens, I miss a month, I can't remember anything.
Well, actually, nothing important happened last month, this is, this is, this is about the month before, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't care about last month.
Yeah. I don't think procedurally, we did anything wrong, but I wasn't for, I wasn't in favor of this to begin with.
Okay. I agree with my colleagues, I did not see in either submission a rationale for rehearing. Would you, would the board like to take these individually or together, these two requests?
Sir, I have the request to do it individually.
Oh, all right.
Just put process going forward.
Very good. In that case, let's take the first one, which was the request from Mr. Scully. Do I hear a motion?
I move to deny the request for rehearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
The vote is four to one, with Mr. Monahan in the minority. The next one is the request for rehearing by Mr. Fahy, Todd Fahy. Do I hear a motion?
I'll, again, would move to deny the request for rehearing.
Is there a second?
I would second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
The vote is four to one, again, with Mr. Monahan in the minority. We will not grant the request, do not grant the request for a rehearing.
Thank you.
Can we juice up the air conditioning a little bit?
I'm sorry?
Can we juice up the air conditioning a little bit?
We have multiple members taking off their suit coats.
Yeah.
It's warmer tonight than it was today.
Well, it's warm up in here anyhow. Okay, so that takes care of those. And that brings us to our first regular public hearing this evening, which is case 0196, 2024, 192 North State Street in a UT urban transitional district. The owner is Malutus Reese, and the applicant is looking to operate a dog grooming business and requests a special exception for personal and business use in urban transitional district. Please come forward. Yeah, which one of you would like to go first?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry, can you announce who's sitting? So, Mark Davies will be sitting on this case.
Mr. Davies will be sitting on the case, along with the other four folks you see. Surrounding me. Ms... Brenda will not be sitting on the case for this one. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Would you identify yourselves, do we have a sign-in sheet?
Yes, they're on the table down there when they leave.
Okay. When you're done, would you stop by the table and jot down your name and information on the sign-in sheet, but if you'd announce yourself for the record now, that would be helpful.
Mercedes Scott.
McAlapulos.
What would you like us to know?
Kay McAlapulos, that's his last name. Maluta, you know, my wife.
Okay, very good. What would you like us to know?
I just thought I have to be here, you know, if you need to ask me anything, I'd be more than happy to answer you.
Well, there are certain criteria for the special exception, which I think you saw on the application. Why don't you run down for us why you believe you meet those criteria?
Well, I'm looking to open a one-on-one dog grooming business.
So, the, what we need to look at is whether this would create undue traffic congestion or?
It would be less traffic.
Less traffic than?
Yeah.
Than what?
Than a restaurant.
Is it?
It was Vino's to go, but I'm doing one-on-one grooming, so I'm only doing one dog at a time.
Vino's?
Yeah, it was a sandwich place.
It was Vino, what's, oh, is this the, the Yellow Submarine?
It's a little tiny building.
Oh, yeah, sure, I know that little building.
Russian Blossom Hill.
Sure, sure.
Yep.
So, it's only me, and I'm doing one-on-one grooming, so it's one dog at a time from start to finish.
Okay.
Interesting.
And they pick up right away.
You have the drop-off that goes into the ravine?
Yeah.
That's behind, okay.
Do you anticipate excessive demand from municipal services or police?
No. No, not at all.
A frisky pool, perhaps?
I would know how to handle it.
Okay.
Kind of interesting, this isn't permitted.
Yeah.
Do you know, is a restaurant permitted here, or did they have an exception?
That was pre-existing non-conforming with the Yellow Submarine, that's why Benny's was allowed to continue that pre-existing non-conform use. This is a change of use in the UT for business, personal use, it needs a special exception.
I'm surprised, because there's, there's a couple other restaurants not far from there, right, like Dallas?
Yeah, this isn't a restaurant anymore.
Oh, right, 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 all right.
This, this becomes a business use.
Right, right. Interesting. But a restaurant wouldn't be allowed?
But it would, because it's pre-existing non-conforming, and they haven't lost their rights, because they haven't closed for over a year, it would still be allowed, if you wanted to put another restaurant in there, with some, I mean.
But if we allow a dog grooming business, and they leave, a restaurant could not come back?
Nope, not without coming back to this board.
Will the dogs stay overnight, or they?
No. They stay max an hour.
Very good. Other questions from the board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Oh, it's just me, it's just solo alone.
With the dog?
It's just one dog at a time, so there's no excessive barking, I'm working one-on-one with the dog, and, I mean, yeah, max one hour or two, but there's no overlapping appointments, and it's by appointment only.
Very good.
Do you have a, I'm sorry, do you have a current business that's located somewhere else doing this work, or are you?
I've been in this industry for like 10 years, I used to work corporate, so I do have a huge following of clientele.
Thank you very much. That's it?
Please sign in down there, and you can go back to your seats, please.
Go back to your seats.
We're all set?
Yeah, we're all set.
Thank you.
That's all, I took it, I'll go that.
Stick around, we're still going to make our decision.
It's pretty exciting, Scott.
Oh, no.
Ouch, that hurts. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a special exception for a dog grooming business. We heard various details as to why they believe the business complies with the request for special exception. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Should move and second it. I assume by moving approval, you?
It beats all nine criterias of the special exception.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the special exception is granted. You're all set.
Easy one.
Good luck with your business. You're welcome. Okay, Ms. Perkins will be up at bat for this one.
Should have looked at it first.
Oh, yeah? Okay. 287 Loudon Road, Gateway Performance District. The owner is Dundee Investment Associates. The applicant is seeking a variance from Article 2872 to provide a total of 153 parking spaces, where 170 are required for a restaurant with a drive-through called, the restaurant will be called Raising Cane.
Wow. Just before John starts, my question, is this just parking, or are there issues with regard to the drive-through that we forced tonight?
Parking for us.
Okay.
We're going to deal with the drive-through by conditional use permit at the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
And one lady.
Oh. You guys can sit over here, if you'd like to get up. Does everybody swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. If, don't forget the sign-in sheet after you testify, but would you please identify yourselves for the record as you testify?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is John Sokol, I'm a director at Hinkley Allen. With me tonight is Michelle Robinson of Michelle Robinson Design, who does a lot of work for Raising Cane, Matt, Matt Ashley from Bowler Engineering, and Rick Demonte, who's the property owner. And being mindful of the 10 minutes, what we'd like to do is have Michelle speak briefly about what Raising Cane is, who they are, they're expanding into this area. Then Matt will walk you through the site, and then I'll just spend a few minutes talking about hardship, special conditions, and that is, I think.
Very good. Carry on.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
My name is Michelle Robinson, and I'm a project development manager for Raising Cane's. Raising Cane's is a quick-serve, fast casual restaurant. We serve one item, chicken fingers, and some sides. Our model is based on primarily a drive-through, 75, 80% of our traffic is through the drive-through, the rest is people coming in to sit down, and, so we want to talk about, we're expanding rapidly, we have a location that's probably nearing completion in Manchester.
Matthew Ashley with Bowler. So, over here's a rendering of the site of what the proposed development's going to be. So, the Raising Cane's development is part of the larger Aldi development that's out there existing. The site was previously permitted for a drive-through use out here, so we're staying consistent with that. The prior use actually had a bigger building, and we're coming in with a smaller building, about 3,300 square feet, with an additional 500 square feet of patio space outside. As part of the development, everything will be happening interior to there, there'll be no new drive-through connections out on Loudon Road, and we'll utilize the existing full access located right here, and then there's another access further down Loudon, just off the rendering here. Additionally, all utility connections will be made within the site, they've already previously planned for those connections with the use in mind, and we are planning to reuse those connections there as well. Some modifications, we are proposing some modifications to the development, just being more specific to the Raising Cane's use, by relocating some parking that's out there, and also kind of to better fit the drive-through that's out here. So, the driveway will be a dual drive-through as a... that's out here. So the driveway will be a dual-drive-through, as Michelle mentioned, that most of Raising Cane's business is through the drive-through, so having additional capacity there is really what makes sense for Raising Cane's. And then lastly, we're proposing about 33 parking spaces around here. Raising Cane's has hundreds of stores, and 33 is just about the perfect number that they like to use, and John can kind of touch on that on his variance application as well. But yeah, so that's a high overview of the site, so John?
I went into pretty good detail about the variance criteria and the written submissions, but a couple things I would like to say. This is a land condominium, so it's a single lot, and so the parking calculations are for the lot as a whole. And what's creating, and it does have an existing site plan approval for the three buildings, and they're making a revision to the middle building. I mean, this is right next to the existing Aldis on Loudon Road. They're double-drive-through, which I think will help keep traffic off. Loudon Road is creating, is cobbling up a few parking spaces, as well as the outdoor patio, which under the Concorde ordinance requires full parking for its square footage. So, I think it's a pretty modest request. I think the drive, and there's also, wasn't there also a change to a drive aisle to, to improve access to Aldis?
So the introducing a drive aisle across from the drive-through, so stacking wouldn't interfere with Aldis, not that it anticipates going over there, but if it did, there, we have a plan to manage it.
And we know we need to go to the planning board to get a conditional use permit for the, for the drive-through, and we will, we will do that.
Can you repeat what you meant by stacking?
So stacking for the drive-through, so all right here is.
Oh, oh, oh.
Stacking, yeah, for the cars.
You mentioned there was a previously approved proposal for a single-drive-through, and then you've redesigned it for two lanes, which makes sense, but who, who approved that? Did that come before us, or what was the previously?
Wasn't needed. There, it wasn't needed.
So what do you mean?
Parking spaces. But at planning board.
Planning board, got it, thanks.
Other questions from the board?
An unfair question, more curiosity. If this were not a pre-building condo, any more standalone restaurant, how many parking places would you need?
We would need.
One seven.
One space per one, no, we would need one space per.
170.
37, 38, it's like 37.5. 1 for 75 square feet, I believe it is.
Yeah, she'll have that somewhere, she will bear with me.
270, John.
I think we would need 55 on our lot, if it were a lot, and we're providing 35.
So it's based off the square footage of the building?
That's based off the square footage of the building and the, and the outdoor seating area.
You mentioned earlier that the parking requirement in the request is based on the entire parcel.
Because it's a single lot.
Okay.
And the, and the land condominium documents provide, each unit owner has the right to cross-access and cross-park throughout the condominium.
Do the, individually, is, there's only one other use there now, which is Aldi?
Correct.
And they have adequate parking? I mean, obviously, they're functioning.
They appear to.
Yeah. Under the ordinance?
Their unit is getting three extra spaces as a part of this redesign.
Okay. But there was no forgiveness for Aldi, that's, that was all done?
No, because it's one full lot, the variances, as it's written, 170 required for the total lot, they'll provide 153.
Okay.
But right, but right now, the Aldi has all the parking where the building's going to be, right? So it's.
It's fairly.
So tons of open space there, I think, in the parking lot, right now.
I don't know, I don't know if it's strike parking or not, but you can drive along there, yeah?
Yeah.
Other questions from the board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know, John?
Oh, but just, we have talked to Aldis, they are on board with this, and we are making a few alterations to their unit, and they're, they're on board with this.
I do just have one more question, and this might be for the property owner, but did you say that it's, it's three condos? Is there potentially another structure that may go in here? And if so, is there any, is there any discussion about what that might consist of?
As of now, it's just to the west of the proposed Raising Cane's is the third lot. And as of now, no. It's approved for a 62, 6,250 square foot building.
There's no, there's nothing in the works yet about what might go there?
No, no, it's retail, and there's some restaurant that's also.
But that square footage is included in the calculation of the overall parking requirement, even though it's not there.
Yeah, I got it.
So right now, you have an abundance of parking technically, because there's no building.
How much stacking did you add by putting in the second lane?
That's essentially doubled what we have by doing that.
Which would be how many cars? How many additional cars?
It's like 20, at least 20. What did I count it?
Is it the outside lane we'd be looking at?
Yeah, yeah, so it's an additional 10 cars on the outside lane.
Okay. So an additional 10 cars, and you're losing how many spaces by doing this?
Yeah, about three.
Other questions from the board? Are we all set, gentlemen, or is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I think we're good.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard?
Forget your sign.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir.
With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request for forgiveness of, they're losing three parking spaces, which puts them under the total required for the lot, and they are adding a second drive-through window with stacking space. I'm going to start this with, let's see, Mark, I think you're in on this one, right?
No, me.
Oh, it's Brenda? Okay.
We're doing this just to keep you on your toes.
Yeah, you know, it's like being the father of twins. You just have no idea which one you're talking to. It's a problem. Ms. Perkins, please fill us in on what you think.
Well, I think it's actually a change from 170 parking space requirement to 153, but I, I don't, I don't see an issue with it. It's, it's constantly moving, you know, vehicles, patterns, different, different store hours. I, I think it's smart to have a two-lane drive-through in a, in a store like that. I go through drive-throughs for coffees and sodas constantly, because I'm on the road a lot, and I never see parking lots full, so I don't see an issue with it.
Good. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, we had, we heard and approved, I think, a very similar request up on the new development in.
Whitney Avenue?
Yeah, I think you, and maybe the Starbucks downtown, too, was similar, and so I think we're, we're going to see more of these, because, like, for the reasons Brenda said, it makes a lot of sense, I agree.
Mr. Monahan?
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Waller?
Yeah, I think because of the, the drive-through element of this particular facility, unlike most other restaurants, the need for parking is substantially less, so I'm inclined to approve it.
I agree with my colleagues. The, the condominium, condominium structure of the lot is a unique feature of the arrangement, and we heard convincing testimony that the parking is not necessary, and we also, they did testify that they are adding 10 stacking spaces, which partly compensates for the number of spaces that they are losing. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance, the variances, or variance, just one variance, is granted. You're welcome.
Tell my son he loves chicken nuggets.
That brings us to case 0211, 2024, to Portsmouth Street, is in an RN neighborhood residential district. The owner is Bedard, Paul E. Jr., and Lisa A., revocable trust. The two variances are requested to allow for a more uniformly dispersed 10-unit development across two zoning districts with different density requirements, and to allow for a cluster development, perimeter buffer encroaching, encroachment from an existing structure. Gentlemen, you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Very good. Do remember to sign in when you, when you step down, but in the interim, would you please let us know who you are as you speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Dan Borowski. I'm a surveyor with Fieldstone Land Consultants. With me is Mr. Paul Bedard, the property owner, and the stepson, Orion J. I'm here tonight to present two variance requests for lots 48Z5 and 48Z6 located on Portsmouth Street, to allow for a cluster development with four units in the RO zone on a lot where 1.5 units is allowed, and to permit a perimeter buffer encroaching on, for an existing structure. The parcels are located in the Merrill Park area of the city, which is east of Interstate 93 and on the north bank of the Merrimack River. The cluster development we are proposing involves combining the two lots, which together have a total of about 200 feet of frontage and 7 and 1/2 acres of land. The RN RO zone line bisects the lot and is located 250 feet from the southerly line of Portsmouth Street. The lot lies in the shoreline protection zone, and a small portion of the lot is in the 100-year flood zone. The two variances we are seeking tonight are to facilitate a cluster subdivision that is in harmony with the surrounding lots, and that has a layout that is more desirable for the city. We are asking for relief from the density requirements for the RO zone, but not to add more units than we would otherwise be able to have on this property, but just to spread the cluster development out in a more even manner. As the RN zone is the least restrictive district, and the RO zone is the most restrictive district with regards to density, developing this property as required by the zoning ordinance as shown on sheet EH2 that we submitted. So this shows what it would look like if you follow the density requirements that's in the zoning ordinance. It would make for an incongruous cluster development, and it makes practical sense to spread the development out as shown on EH1, which is what we'd like to do.
So the one, the one where there, where it's incongruous, as you said, is, would be allowed, it just, you don't?
Correct.
It just wouldn't be a desirable layout from your perspective?
Correct. We're asking to allow an additional 2 and 1/2 units in the RO zone, so that we can spread it out more evenly amongst the lot.
So you're allowed to put up to 1 and 1/2 units in the RO zone?
Yes. The density calculations are on the bottom right of the plan, where we break out the, the areas.
The plan you like, or the plan you don't like?
Uh, both plans.
So this is right down by the river?
Yes.
Right down on the back corner of Eastman Street?
Yes.
I'm not guessing, I can say that stuff, right?
So allowing for this, this concept, allowing variances for this concept really gives the best features of both districts, where it allows the units in the north of the lot in the RN district to enjoy greater spacing and yard sizes, while allowing the units in the south, which are in the RO district, to take advantage of municipal sewer and water, which is available on site. We believe this layout finds the balance between the two zones, while also honoring the spirit of the zoning ordinance. Allowing the uniform development of the lot will not be against the public interest, as it will prevent overcrowding in the RN zone portion of the lot, and will allow each unit to enjoy the yard area one might expect with a single-family home. The character of the neighborhood will be upheld by allowing for more units to be located in the RO zone, and consequently, fewer units in the RN zone. The spirit of the ordinance is observed by presenting overcrowding of the land, while allowing for reasonable and responsible growth in the community. A balanced development will result from granting these variances, which will provide for much-needed housing opportunities. The stated purpose of the cluster development section of the ordinance is to permit greater flexibility and more creative design of residential areas than is generally possible under the conventional zoning regulations. It is the intent of that section to promote the efficient use of land while providing for a harmonious variety of housing choices, a high level of amenities, and the preservation of the natural and scenic qualities of open spaces, and compatibility of adjacent land uses. We submit that the proposed layout honors that sentiment even more than a compliant layout would. Substantial justice is done by granting the variances, because it allows the property owner to pursue a sensible development of their land, allows for the balance between space requirements of the RO zone and the accessible, accessibility of municipal sewer and water found in the RN zone. There is no appreciable public gain from denying the variances. There's no evidence that allowing for a more uniform development would diminish surrounding property values, as the proposed, excuse me, as the proposed layout is much more in harmony with the surrounding developed properties. The increase of 2 and 1/2 units in the RO zone is removed from the developed abutting lots. The abutters to the RO zone portion of the property consists of conservation land to the east, a municipal sewer pump house to the west, and the Merrimack River to the south. The special circumstances of the property are what make us believe granting this variance is fair and just. The zone line bisects the property arbitrarily dividing into two zones with vastly different density allotments. As I just mentioned, the abutters to the zone we're asking for increased density are non-residential. The abutters to the RN portion of the lot are several residential lots, and a decreased density on this portion of the lot would allow for a greater buffer between residential abutters and the development. Granting these variances honors the general purpose of the ordinance and preserves the character of the neighborhood. The majority of what I presented thus far pertains to the density relief we're seeking for the proposed cluster development, so I'd like to touch on the second variance we're asking for, which is the perimeter buffer encroachment for an existing structure, and that's this existing structure right here on 2 Portsmouth Street. The existing house is currently about 15 feet from the right-of-way. While this is compliant with the RN zone front setback, a cluster development requires a 25-foot perimeter buffer to be, be maintained free of structures. The existing building was built in the late 1800s and faces the intersection of Eastman and Portsmouth Street, which is a wide portion of the road. We are asking for this variance so we can keep the existing structure and not have to modify or demolish it because of the perimeter buffer. The special circumstance that exists is the fact that we have an existing historic structure located close to a uniquely shaped right-of-way. The perimeter buffer required for cluster development is so that adjacent properties are visually and physically separated. The adjacent properties will be no less separated from the structure than they have been for the last 140 years. We are not asking to construct any new structure in the buffer just to keep what is already there. The direct abutters to the structure are city-owned land at the corner of Eastman and Portsmouth Street, right here, the municipal sewer pump station, right here, and the property at, I believe that's 52 Eastman Street, which is right here, and as you can kind of see on the aerial images, the property at 52 Eastman Street is located over 200 feet away from the existing structure, and is oriented towards Eastman Street, not Portsmouth Street. We believe this unique circumstances mean that the public interest is supported and the spirit of the ordinance is honored, even with this minor encroachment. The existing building will actually serve as a visual buffer itself, shielding a portion of the cluster development from view of the street. The substantial justice will be done, because it will allow the property owner to utilize a historic structure as part of a new development, keeping the character of the neighborhood intact. There's no discernible public gain from requiring the removal or alteration of the structure just to gain 10 feet of separation from the right-of-way. We believe allowing this historic, historic structure to remain will enhance the neighborhood and bring value to the surrounding properties. Thank you, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions from the board?
So I just want to confirm, looking at the two maps, this is in compliance to the current zoning, pushing all of this closer to the neighbors that are already there?
Yes, because the RN zone line right here allows for nine units to be built.
Right up in the backyard, but this one that you're trying to ask for the variance for is going to pull them away from the backyard?
Correct. Two and 1/2 units into the RO zone, so that we can spread these out around.
Yeah, that is tough, having a zoning change halfway through that. Okay, yeah.
On the, I'm sorry, Chris?
Other questions?
On the issue of the buffer, is it that every unit is supposed to meet the buffer?
So for the second variance, in the RN zone? So for the second variance, in the RN zone, a 25-foot perimeter buffer around a whole tract is required for a cluster development.
So the buffer will be met as to every other structure?
Every other structure, correct. Just the existing house right here is only 15 feet or so.
So if you didn't have the existing, you would be able to design it to meet the buffer, but with the existing one there, you don't want to tear it down?
We could even, right, we could tear it down and build a structure 25 feet back, but that just seems like not a great idea for the sake of a 10-
Eighty-five feet is the porch, the front porch of the house.
Eighty-five feet is just the porch, yeah.
Then it's a two-story.
Can you just point out about which one is numbered, is the current structure?
This one right here, with the porch in the front and about two feet of the actual structure is, the front of the structure is about 15 feet from the right-of-way and this line right here is a 25-foot perimeter buffer.
Just basic question. It's been a while since we've had a cluster development. Is the idea that ultimately these will all be subdivided and sold as individual lots?
It's going to be one unit, or one lot with 10 units on it. Two of the units are existing, the existing house at Two Portsmouth and Six and a Half Portsmouth Street.
Well, so they'll be condos?
No, the only use allowed for cluster developments is single-family.
So if it's one lot, I mean, are they going to be rented out?
Yeah, it's like an HOA.
So they will be sold to individual owners?
Yes, yes. Yes, individual owners, but not individual lots.
Other questions?
I believe they'll have limited common areas, yes, condos.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so an HOA, like a condo development?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it's like a single-family condominium development?
Probably going to be condos, yeah, okay.
So it'll have an association, it'll have rules, it'll have to be maintained?
And they'll share the cost of the road maintenance and, you know, just basically as minimal as possible.
Yeah.
You know, independence as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
So is it one lot now or multiple lots?
It's two lots now. This is the lot line right here and we're proposing to combine the two lots. There's about one acre at Six and a Half Portsmouth Street and six and a half acres on Two Portsmouth Street.
And who owns those slots now?
The Paul and Lisa Bedard Revocable Trust, Mr. Paul Bedard.
Owns both lots?
Yes.
And then help me understand the, the preferred drawing has structures in the shoreline protection zone?
Yes, that's allowed as long as there, the 150-foot natural woodland buffer is maintained. And the lot line right here is about, is 154 feet, so as long as we stay out of that natural woodland buffer, we can, there, there are other, you know, stipulations in the shoreline protection zone, but you're all allowed to develop in it.
Okay, thanks. Other questions?
Will it add significant cost to follow the compliant one?
It'd be less cost.
It would be less cost, really, yeah, because it would be a shorter road, the buildings would be closer together, utilities would be cheaper to get to them. But we really think that the, one with the variances is more harmonious with the surrounding properties and would be a better fit for the neighborhood.
I'm a land specialist in my profession. Just, you got to spread it out. The hardship would be the split-zone lot, which has always been there. It's kind of an arbitrary line, you know, and just trying to, as you said, by, by the spirit of the intent, just spread it out a little bit, I think will be much better in the end.
I have a question about your, your drawing. The, there's some dashed lines, I'm looking at an individual building design. There's, there's some dashed lines and rectangles. What are those?
Those are the minimum required yard for each unit. So as you can see with this layout, we would be able to afford each unit much more than the minimum required individual yard. I believe it's 300 square feet in the RN zone and 500 square feet in the RO zone.
In a, in a PUD?
In a cluster development.
In a cluster development or not?
Yes.
But the compliant one, you would still meet the minimum, which would be much more squashed?
We would well exceed the minimum.
Even on the compliant one?
Even on the compliant one. But it would obviously, you know, yards wouldn't be quite as favorable, you know, for each unit.
You don't have a zoomed-out map to see where, like, the zoning from a broader?
Yeah, is there a way to see, like, where this?
So it's very light shade difference, the yellow, if you want to call it RN, and there's a line right where my curse is going, and this is RO. I can try to zoom in if I don't get dizzy here.
Yeah, I got it. Sometimes it's just helpful to-
Oh, it's so faint. It's so, so faint.
Yeah, so you can just kind of see it there.
It's on the plans.
It's this big bold line right here on the plan.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how far out, like, what, like, does that go?
Oh, it continues along, it's parallel to Portsmouth Street, 250 feet down. Actually, it jogs up here just a little bit.
Yeah, and it matches the back lots of all the other houses. It's just, for some reason, it branched off and went at a strange angle.
Yeah.
The homes that you propose to build, how?
Single-family, you know, I mean, at this stage, it's to be determined. The cost of the road is going to be substantial until we start to get a handle on the, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars to put city water, sewer, undergoing electrical, curbing, pigment. And we're, right now, we're looking at, you know, a few hundred feet. So substantial.
So I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of, we talking 4,000 square foot homes or?
Well, we're not limited for space-wise, so, because we have a lot of space. It's going to be the economic side of things and where, that's to be determined by, as time goes on, to see where all lays in. Who's going to be the buyers for these?
So also, we're limited by the, the ordinance requiring spacing between the houses. I think it's 30 feet in the RN zone and 50 feet in the RO zone. So obviously, if they all have to be kind of crammed up in the RN zone, that would tend to lead to much smaller houses than if we were able to spread them out.
The two houses that are on the lots now are 2,800, you know, 3,500 square feet. So they're good-sized houses now, you know?
Two-story?
Yeah.
I know what you're thinking, probably two-story.
The average houses down that road in that area are single-family houses where, I grew up there, so I know what it, yeah, I know what it's like living there. It's, it's an amazing place to live. It's, it's a great park right down the road, good fishing, all that stuff. But I think the intent is to have single-family homes that can support, you know, a standard nuclear family, you know, type of thing. And having a yard that's large enough for everyone to go outside and play and enjoy the river and around other people makes sense in my mind.
Other questions from the board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I don't think so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Please sign in.
Is there anyone who'd like to be, who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
Yes.
Don't forget to grab your sign.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Donna Cassidy. I live at 14 Portsmouth Street and I abut the Six and a Half Portsmouth Street, which is one of the properties seeking the zoning variance. It, in the, in with the paper that you have, it just says Two Portsmouth Street, but it's really Two and Six and a Half. In fact, the building at Six and a Half is already behind.
Could you show us where on the map?
Sure.
Can we zoom in up there a little bit? Could you show us where?
This is your property, Donna.
This is Port, it's too, yeah. I need, I need the picture that he just took away.
All right, would you bring that back?
Hold on, I have it right here. No, it's up there now.
They can show us on the screen if that's easier.
All right. This is the house at Six and a Half, oh, man. This is Portsmouth Street. This is the house, this is the house at Six and a Half Portsmouth.
The L-shaped one?
This is the house, the farmhouse at Two Portsmouth.
Okay, and where is your house?
My house is right here.
Next to the Six and a Half one?
Yes.
Okay.
And it doesn't really show on this particular picture, but there are neighbors here that live right here. And then there are neighbors that live right here in the house that the road is going to be built on to get to the development. And those folks don't really want traffic to and from the development, day and night, right by their house.
Naturally.
I would say. We also have neighbors that are right in back of, right in here, right in back of that lot. So that, that's that. Okay. All right. Thank you for listening. In fact, one other, one other thing I just happened to think of, that house at Six and a Half Portsmouth Street is the oldest house in East Concord. I am clearly opposed to these two variances and the ensuing cluster housing development. Portsmouth Street from number two to number 30 is a very old historic neighborhood. My grandparents lived across the street from the lot that my father built my house on 58 years ago. Now my cousin John is living in my grandparents' house and he is the fifth generation to live in that house. Merrill Park was named for my grandfather, Harold Merrill. So I do have some history in that neighborhood. There are 17 houses on that section of Portsmouth Street, and when I built 58 years ago, 13 of the 17 were already there and some over 100-plus years old, including the farmhouse at number two Portsmouth. Adding eight additional homes plus the two remaining houses are right next to 93 North and South, the Turnpike Bridge, the bike path, the City of Concord pump station is just way too much for what the neighborhood is prepared for. Four of the current neighbors will have part of the housing development in, literally in their backyard. The family on Four Portsmouth Street that I've already talked about will have the driveway to the development, which you can see is that little road with the, the loop around. And honestly, it is truly, their house is truly, I didn't measure it, but it is a few feet from that road. The proposed development promises to change the entire neighborhood. Truly, we are not wanting it, we are not ready for it, and it will change everything that we've, that we've enjoyed all these years. We have runners from NHTI, many walkers all over, children riding bikes, many walkers park at Merrill Park and, and the conservation parking lot, which is down the street, and walk the area, both the street and the conservation trails. Yes, the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forest also abuts the land that the housing development is going to be on, down by the river. We are blessed with wildlife of all kinds and this development will surely encroach on wildlife habitat. I don't know if anyone is here from the Conservation Center. There is someone here. Good. I realize the land in question is no longer zoned floodplain. It was for many years. It was when I moved in. I also know that the riverbanks in that area lose any road several feet every single year and have, right along. And I got this information from the, the society, from the conservation folks. So you can fact-check that if you'd like. They can give you that information. So it, so we are talking about something that is truly going to affect a lot of people's lives. I do believe that someone sent you an email today.
It'll be read into the record after, ma'am.
Oh, you're going to read it? Good. I thank you for listening and I hope and pray that you will understand where the neighbors are coming from and will just leave the zoning the way it is. Zoning, as hot as it is sometimes, is, is in place for a reason, to protect all of us. So thank you very much for listening. I so appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do. Chris Miller. I live at 25 Portsmouth Street, a little bit further down towards the hill.
You've been on this side of this desk?
I have been on this side of the, and many years ago now. You are, you were a young apprentice to Dr. Wilson at the time.
That's right. I borrowed the tie from him.
And I served with Nick, too. And it's been my pleasure to be back here a couple of times in support of things that neighbors were proposing. In this case, I'm here to speak in opposition to it. You know, I think that the density questions are a creature of the, of the zoning and so, you know, I think my principal perspective is, is that the Achilles' heel of this thing is the accessway, which is shoehorned between two existing properties, one of which they own, one of which is, I think, a victim of this design. Because, I mean, this road will go, you know, you could, the, the previous drive-up vendor, this would be a good spot for them. You could just drive by and pick things up from the house on your way by. And the, the road's going to be very, very close there. And I think it's, I would argue there's no justification for it because they have options. And they, you know, they're trying to save themselves from having to demolish a portion of or a property, but to accomplish this plan, I think they do have an option. And I think the ordinance and the variance from the ordinance needs to reflect that.
Question, Mr. Miller. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition? Do I see another hand? Yes, please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
Sure. My name is Carrie Deegan and I work for the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forest. We own the conservation parcel. It's about 100 acres to the east of the parcels in question. And I don't have an official statement from the Forest Society for or against this development. It takes us a little longer than a week to get something like that together. But I did want to make two points that you might want to consider when you're looking at potentially changing the density in the, the RO district. And the first one was brought up by, I guess, Donna? Yes. And that is that we are, you know, it's a very dynamic ecosystem down there. It's a, it is an active floodplain and we are, because we're on a, the outside of a meander bin on the Merrimack, we're losing one to three feet of that year and have been for a long time. So what looks like 250 feet of shoreline protection buffer today in 10 or 20 years might not look like that. So just something to consider. The other point I wanted to make is that there are several animal species of concern down there in that floodplain area. We have wood turtles that utilize the upland areas as well as the wetlands and bank swallows, which are species of special concern in New Hampshire, and they're declining quite rapidly and they are, they make their nest in the bank of the Merrimack. So just that, that shoreline protection buffer is there for a reason. It's doing its job. It's supposed to keep, you know, pesticides and lawn herbicides and all of those things, impervious surface, out of the Merrimack frontage. And- And before you change the density of zoning in there, I would ask you to consider those points.
Questions?
So, you know, all the issues you talked about are not before us tonight, right? I think you know that.
Are what?
Are not before us this evening.
Well, the issue you have to decide is whether you want to up the density in the RO, and that is before you today.
So, I think what we saw from the applicant, we're gonna see if we all understand the same thing, is that they're gonna, they have the ability to use the property to develop eight additional structures. The question is, are they gonna do it within the current rights that they have as a property? Or are they gonna do it with the changes they have here? So I'm just wondering if you, and very simplistically, looking at how the Forest Society's property is impacted, it seems to be less impacted by the design that we're gonna approve this evening as opposed to what they were just built by right?
I don't think so, no. The one where there's more houses in the shoreline protection, in, in the RO zone, is the one that, like, would impact the most wildlife and would be impacting the shoreline protection buffer more because there's more houses that are actually proposed within that.
So if they're allowed to build ten houses as a matter of right ecologically, it would be superior if they pushed them farther away from the river, is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, yeah, that's essentially what I'm saying.
But then it would push it closer to all the neighbors.
Right, right, no, I get that. And to each other. But I was just saying, ecologically.
Ecologically, for the shore.
For the, just looking at the shore only, no other consideration, you're saying it's better?
Wildlife habitat, yes, and this, yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you, I didn't understand, but now I do.
Okay.
Does the hundred acres that the conservation land has run all the way along the river?
It does, yeah.
So you have another hundred acres beyond this seven-acre parcel?
Yeah, it's a whole lot of shoreline. And the whole area where this lot is, is primarily open field at this point.
Any other questions from Ms. Deegan? Thank you very much. Please sign in on the.
Okay, I'll do that.
List down there. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition? Did I see a hand?
Yeah.
Please come forward.
Opposition, because we were never informed to have yet, but.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but? May we have your name, please?
Paul Camacho. My wife and I are the current owners of fifty-two Eastman Street, so somebody mentioned in the hearing. It's still not clear to me what they're gonna do in terms of what houses are developed. Speaking for their own property, that six and a half is one of the oldest houses there. But also, the house that the road would go by, that was an inn in the late seventeen hundreds or the early eighteen hundreds. So there's a lot of historic buildings there. I don't know how they're impacted, I don't know what the development does. I know the highway creates just the vibrations on the highway. The Eastman houses gone through several changes, just in all the traffic and what you'd see on the highway. That has to, in my common sense approach, has to impact the sand that's you're sitting on. At least, I would venture to say it's at least eight to possibly as much as sixteen feet to get to the bedrock from the sand on that property. So that, see, the sand, as the conservation person told you, is shifting all the time. There were a lot of, there was much deeper into the river. They used to, in the nineteen nineties, they had sleigh rides through there. Then they had two, those roads are gone now, and the little Christmas tree farm they had, they, they couldn't put that in now as well, that's how much erosion is making. So the big, so I have a lot of questions, I think we all do, people that live there do. It would have been a lot smarter and common sense if they told us what they wanted to do well before we got this notice. Because their plan sounds like it makes more sense, the way their argument claims, it makes more sense to grant the various causes of equitism and all these other things. But I'm not sure, are they gonna live up to the single families? They mentioned condos.
Unfortunately, that, that's not something.
I'm just opposed with saying it's, it may be irrelevant to your hearing, but it isn't irrelevant to us.
No, it's not irrelevant to you, but it is irrelevant to the questions that we can deal with, which means we really shouldn't be spending the public's or our time on it.
But Dave, they, that's it?
Unless you have something else?
Oh, I'm sorry, once they have a more concrete plan, will they have to go in front of the planning board?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so there, there will be more public sessions in front of the planning board for more, when more details emerge.
And that's probably where the issues that you're raising are better dealt with.
Fine, I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, I'm glad to hear it. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Will do. My name is Randy Cotton. I live at forty-six Eastman Street. And the only thing that I want to bring up is the fact that this is something for you to consider about the history about the neighborhood. And I think that those are things that you need to take into consideration as far as, as far as your decisions are being made. That's all I wanted to say, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of history there. I mean, Portsmouth Street is, there's a marker right at the end of it where it meets Eastman Street, basically stating that this is the first turnpike in the state. So just some things to keep in mind about history.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Would you sign in down there on that sheet, please? Is there someone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward.
Hi.
Hello. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
My name is Lisa Bissin, I reside at eight Portsmouth Street. I've lived there about thirty years. Six and a half is directly behind my house, okay, like, right behind my house. Which, again, someone mentioned, this was not in that form, I didn't know this was included in this whole thing. My house is eighteen sixteen, I lovingly restored it. I bought this house in this beautiful quaint quintessential historic neighborhood for a reason. And I don't want to see this happen, it sounds like we can't stop it. But if we do, I really don't want this variance to go by, or the, not to go by. Unfortunately, I feel like I'm being pushed in a corner here, that I don't have a choice. Either way, I'm gonna be looking at my backyard and seeing new cookie cutter development going on, you know, instead of the deer and the turkey that come to see me and wildlife, and I don't know, it's just, it's really gonna change the whole aesthetic of this neighborhood forever, forever.
Have you looked at the two plans that they proposed?
I have.
You have?
I have, and unfortunately, go ahead.
Do you, you, you're, you're right in about, in one sense, that one of those plans,
Yes.
they can do by right, and we can't, we can't do anything about it. The other, they can't do by right, they would need our approval.
I know.
Do you see one or the other as being preferable to you?
Well, the one with the lesser amount of houses, and the one that's not, you know, the one with the eight houses as opposed to the nine, I would feel even better if it was, you know, maybe cut down some, and maybe even lesser houses. I just have a lot of questions, are there gonna be streetlights? Do I have to worry about lights in my backyard, you know, coming in my bedroom at night? Are, are there gonna be buffers, are they gonna keep the, the trees for screening? Am I gonna have to, you know, look out, like I said, and see new, you know?
So I think that's all planning board?
Yeah.
And the, the eight does keep them out of that corner, right? Like the.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, I've looked at it, believe me. I think I'm probably still gonna be able to see a few of the houses right now. I mean, if, with the, with the, the first plan that they'd like, the one with the eight as opposed to the nine, you know?
So that actually looks better to you?
Unfortunately, yes. Like I said, I feel like, you know, we're not, I've gotta pick the less of two equals here, you know?
Unfortunately, from what the point of view, what the zoning board can do for you, yes. What may happen elsewhere, you can't speak to. We are, we, we do have superpowers, but they're limited.
And also, like, like Donna Cassidy mentioned, you know, this neighborhood is extremely pedestrian-friendly. I mean, people, East Concord isn't that friendly for walkers, or people to ride their bikes, or walk the dog and stuff. There's a lot of hills, there's not a lot of sidewalks. People come specifically here to our neighborhood. I mean, it's a constant, you know what I mean, flow of people walking and stuff. And I think the increase in traffic is gonna be, you know, an issue, too. I just don't, unfortunately, I don't foresee any goodness coming to us for this. And I think it's gonna change the dynamics, you know, of this hood forever.
Thank you.
Don't forget to sign in.
Is there, is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward. Swear to tell the whole truth and so on? May we have your name, please?
Michael Gray, I live at five Portsmouth Street.
What would you like us to know?
I was wondering, they said they have so many feet here, is this, is it exactly, or they just go by their computer zone model? Have they measured since recently of the river, how much feet have they lost since last time was, like, they surveyed it?
Well, I suspect the engineer will be back to visit with us very shortly, and we can ask him that question.
I think spread out looks better, but.
Say that again?
Spread out looks better, but, I know, how much feet do you need from a house to a road?
Well, that, that is laid out by, by regulations, both state and local.
But we're not being asked to address that question tonight.
Which means they're probably in compliance and not needing a variance for it.
So you need like twenty-five feet?
If, if they, if they're putting it closer than what they need, and they didn't ask for it, they would have a problem. So they're, they're, they, it's on them to figure that out before they start building.
I personally, I think it's, for your full house, it wouldn't look as bad, but eight, nine would be a lot worse.
Of course.
And I think if they're gonna build, they should try to keep them like the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Comments from code enforcement?
Yes, sir.
I did have a, an email here, which is dated today's date. To whom it may concern, my wife Angela and I reside at thirty Portsmouth Street. This is Douglas Finney of thirty Portsmouth Street. They've reviewed the proposal for the cluster development, and they object to the variances as proposed. They are concerned about the sensitivity of the Merrimack River and the ever-changing area. The spirit in which the zoning code was, code was written should be upheld to continue to protect this fragile area. There is no hardship in our opinion that would necessitate a variance. The intent of the applicant can be achieved by developing fewer new homes, period. Please deny this request for a variance. Mr. Borowski, Mr. Bedard, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to what you've heard?
Yes, sir.
I believe I mispronounced your name, it's Borowski, correct?
Yes, Borowski.
I apologize.
So it sounds like we got here from a lot of butters tonight, which is great feedback for us because it sounds like we have a long road ahead at the planning board, where we can address, take a lot of these concerns and address them in the design of this project. This is obviously, as you all know, this is the first step in a long process to get this plan accomplished. And knowing the concerns of the butters, we can really help you make a plan that works for the community. I heard several people mention the erosion of the river be a big concern of theirs. If you can tell on the aerial, this is a very wooded section of shoreline, whereas if you go to the east, there aren't really as many trees to hold the soil in place and hold the bank in place. So Mr. Bedard's owned this property for over thirty years, and you've noticed minimal erosion compared to other places along the river. We had a wetland scientist walk the whole site and found no wetlands on site. Obviously, it's for the Merrimack River, but there is a drop-down to, to get to that. The road placement is, so it looks large on this plan, but that's because that is the fifty-foot-wide right-of-way that is required. The actual road itself is a common driveway and is much more narrow than the, the right-of-way provides. But the right-of-way provides enough room to get utilities to the site, get whatever, you know, the planning board needs, you know, the municipality needs for the, you know, outside of the actual pavement itself. The pavement is, right, access. The pavement is much narrower than what's depicted on, on the plan. Let's see. As far as the, the history of the neighborhood, that seems like it's a very contentious point with a lot of, a lot of the neighbors, and that is really why we tried to keep the two existing dwellings that are on the lot as part of this development. We'd like to keep them, to keep the, the character of the old neighborhood there while also developing what is, you know, prime land in a time when housing is in a great need in the state, you know, pretty much all over the country. And if you look at the overall density, they're seven and a half acres, and we'd like to build eight new houses for a total of tens, that's three-quarters of an acre per house. And a lot of these surrounding properties are a lot less than three-quarters of an acre that hold, you know, a single-family home. So I think it's a very reasonable request. We're not requesting for any increase in overall density. We're just asking to be able to spread it out in a more favorable manner.
Questions on the board? Thank you very much. With that, we declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a variance to allow a greater-than-permitted density in the RO zone on a lot that is, or will be a lot, that is bisected by a zoning law, one half of which is our RO. We are testimony that the reason for the request is that the quality of the design of the layout is improved by being able to do this, whereas the overall density of the project would not change. All right, who, who's up on this one now?
Marcus, but I'd like, can I add a comment?
Of course.
You know, as in, a railter for almost thirty years, and an East Concord resident for almost thirty years, I, I feel like, looking at this design, the fact that they're, by right, have the ability to build additional house, by right, have the ability to push it right up into the neighbors, I think it shows a lot of consideration in them asking for this variance to pull the homes away from the neighbors and not encroach too much into the shoreline, trying to make it work, cut out a house out of the design. And again, a lot of the concerns, and I completely understand, I, I live in this area. I'm two miles from the spot, up just right up the same street. So I understand all their concerns, but they're all concerns that will be in the planning board stage and not what we have to consider. So I think it shows great respect for the neighbors, that they're trying to accommodate as many of them as possible by showing a considerate design. And I, I know that change is difficult, but it sounds to me like they're gonna be considerate in that planning phase, and that's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Mark, what do you think about it?
I'll start with the positive. I'm not opposed to housing or this amount of density in this spot in particular. I think it's walkable to several parks and a couple small businesses on that street. I think it's a great spot for more housing. I think the traffic is negligible with the bike path there. Hopefully, more housing there, has more people using the bike path, and there's a lot of in and out already going to the Forest Society and the swimming hole over there. I think the applicant's concern about the demand for particular housing size is negligible as well. I think there's a housing crisis, and people are gonna live there, who are gonna live there regardless of the size of the house or the, or per unit available. I resonate with, or the Forest Society's rep, it, it is about climate resonant, or climate readiness. That resonated with me. Does this have to go to Concom? Is that how that works?
I don't know how to answer that, but when it goes through the planning board, they will make those decisions.
Ultimately, I don't see the hardship. The applicant themselves said it is cheaper and less resource-intensive. The applicant themselves said it is cheaper and less resource-intensive to build the compliant one, so I'm inclined to deny.
I suspect the answer to your question is no on the Concom.
Then so be it, yeah.
If it's a variance from the zoning board, that Concom would not be able to override.
With the shoreline part then, and the wooded buffer?
As long as they're not in violation of those.
Okay, then, yeah.
There wouldn't be an issue as far as Concom is concerned. Far, I don't believe. Mr. Wedders?
Yeah, I mean, I can absolutely admire and appreciate the neighborhood's concern for the historic character of the neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood, there's a lot of history there. And no one in that neighborhood would want this cluster development built there, of course. But the cluster development is allowed by right. So it's being posed to us that we're saying yea or nay to a cluster, but we're not. We, we're not being asked to rule on whether they can put a cluster there. They're allowed to put a cluster there, they're allowed to put 10 homes there. So the only two questions are, one, the buffer, which in my mind, that's an obvious hardship. I mean, it would be insane to tear down that, that structure. I mean, that's a, I can't remember the exact year, but it's a very historic structure. Or even to tear down the porch, I mean, there'd be no, there'd be, you know, no reason to do that. And so I see the existing structures being a hardship where, because they're going to meet the buffer as to every other point around the perimeter, it's just on that one point. So then the only real question is, is it a hardship based on the splitting of the zone? And I think it, it is. It makes a lot more sense to kind of spread out the houses in sort of a, in sort of an equal way. The, I do, I do accept that there's erosion there and that's a concern. I'm not, I'm not buying that there's no erosion occurring. I certainly accept that there's erosion and I think that is a factor. And if that was the only factor, it might make a little more sense to push them all away. But then you also have to balance that against the effect of the other neighbors. Why push the houses closer to the other neighbors? I mean, they're already going to be disrupted. Actually, when pressed, they will kind of, at least one of them did kind of agree that it's better to have them all spread out. And I mean, it does make more sense. So I am considering the erosion, but balancing everything, I do think it makes more sense for, to, for a variance to allow it to be sort of a more logical layout on the entire joint lots.
Mr. Bodenhand?
I am okay with the second request with regard to the buffer to maintain the integrity of the ability to keep the historic house in place. With regard to decisions before, some of the, the first one, I guess, if we vote against it, it is creating more density. So we're surprised to hear from the neighbors that they wanted us to vote no. I think in some measure, maybe they just didn't come into the room knowing that this was a, you're going to get it one way or the other type of question. That said, I am not convinced, I've seen in the record of presenters tonight, that the, the zone, the zone line is there for no good reason. You know, I think that it is distinguishable that when, that there was kind of a historic neighborhood there. The zoning was put into place, and so the R-O district, I think, does serve as the ecological buffer. Where you want less density and that's why it's there. You know, it may divide lots, but I don't think that's totally unusual. So I don't want to, I don't think I have enough in front of me to vote yes on that and interrupt the integrity of the R-O district in that part of the city.
Mr. Ward?
Well, it's unfortunate that this is going to change the character of the neighborhood, but they can do it. To me, pushing all the buildings right up against all the abutters is really not in the best interest of the community. And I'm entitled to, I'm leaning towards supporting the variance request so that at least we can get these properties spread out a little bit more.
I agree with my colleagues about the buffer setback. That clearly is hardship created by the placement of the existing building. And it is an old building that long predates the zoning. Nothing would be gained by enforcing the ordinance in that case. I'm of two minds on the other request. As I believe it was Ms. Cassidy, no. Carrie Deegan, who, from the Forest Society, Ms. Deegan pointed out this would result in putting more houses in the area that is segregated to be protected. The appellant argued that it was an arbitrary line. I don't, I don't think it's an arbitrary line, it follows the line of the river for obvious reasons to my, to my mind. On the other hand, if I look at the difference between the two plans, how much additional impact is there really? We wind up with how much more?
It's not really, it's...
250% more.
Okay.
It's one full house either way. There's one full house in the shore land either way, and then there's a piece of a house either way, either design.
So...
And neither one, well, one is, just the one house are in the shore land protection line.
One and a half versus...
That's the zone line, I just looked at that again. If you look at the bottom line, that's the shore land protection zone.
Yeah.
So there's one house right up against the line in one design, and then there's one house in the line.
Yeah, but the zone line itself is actually back, that's where it says R-N-R-O.
Right, yeah.
So what's happening in the zone is, in one case, four houses, and in the other case, one and a half houses.
It's going to push all the houses a little closer to the river, so whatever impact the house has.
But he did say, they had a wetlands person look at it because of the density of the trees. They're not seeing the same amount of erosion...
Yeah.
As they're seeing without that density.
Yep, and I don't doubt that, but...
But I, I mean, we had the expert here on that.
I, I have no reason to quarrel with that, but it does have an impact on a zone which was put there for the purpose of protecting the edge of the river. Now, that said, I do think there, you can conceive of a hardship in a situation where the zoning creates a requirement for an inferior plan as a result of complying with the zoning. And we've heard arguments that the closer-together buildings are an inferior plan. I'm not sure I felt, I feel that that was proven as I looked at it. Is it really an inferior plan? It's more dense, further away from the river, which is actually consistent with what I think the intent of both the shore land protection zone and the R-O district were. So although I'm very much divided on this one, I think I'm going to come down on the side of not granting the variance for the greater density in the R-O zone. Which is a long-winded way of saying that's where I stand.
So it seems like we shall...
We shall see.
Have two separate votes.
Mark, you got a question?
Yeah, I was just going to, I didn't say earlier that I am in support of the buffer one, the buffer variance.
So based on the comments, why don't we split the issues up and I'll move to approve the variance regarding the buffer?
Okay. It's been moved, is there a second? I'll say a minute. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. And then the next question is the variance concerning the additional houses in the R-O zone.
I'll move to deny.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I, you know, I think we should have the record rely on the conversation about the fact that the R-O district is, is there as it runs along the shoreline. So there's a reason that it's there and it was, yes, not anything in the record suggests that we should...
Unfortunately, I do not have the power to grant points of order. Did you have some factual information that you needed us to know?
Yes, sir. The R-O zone line is 250 feet off of Portsmouth Street, so it follows the street.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
My mistake.
I guess, you have enough...
We're going to talk about that after the break.
From the deliberations to base the decision.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion on the motion? The motion is to deny.
Deny the density one?
The density one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The vote is three to two, the motion carries.
Voted in negative, thank you. See if I was voting that would pass.
Yeah, we got it.
The neighbors are not going to be happy. If I had been the voting member, that would have passed, that would have been different.
That brings us to the next case this evening. Which is 0212...
That is a volv.
80 Store Street, Opportunity Corridor Performance District. The owner is Bricksmore Capital S.C.L.L.C. Variance to permit 769 parking spaces where 1,172 are required, or in the alternative, where 984 reduced to 799 by 2020 variance are required. Variances from Section 2867F to permit building signs with any points located higher than the plate of the flat roof. Variances from Section 2869B1 to permit five building signs on the front of the building with a total of 990 square feet, 366 square feet permitted. Five signs on the rear of the building with a total area of 570 square feet and one sign on each of the side faces of the building, 111 square feet and 228 square feet. Variances from Section 2841H to allow an encroachment of 73 square feet with a setback within the setback at the rear of the building. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but.
We did.
Would you, once again, identify yourselves for the record as you speak?
I'm the chairman, members of the board, for the record. My name's John Sokal from Hinckley Allen. I'm here tonight on behalf of Bricksmore Capital Group, the owner of the Capital Commons Shopping Center on Store Street. With us is Morgan Dunson from Novus Engineering and Sean Logue from Create Architecture Planning and Design. Morgan is familiar with the site layout and the engineering, and Sean is very familiar with the signage that is subject of a couple of our variants. I do have a handout that I think will make it easier for the board to have and efficiently consider, consider what we're doing and what we're proposing, and I'd like to hand it out if I... So to my left is Mark Newman, who is Vice President of Development for Bricksmore. He is incredibly passionate about revitalizing and redeveloping this shopping center. But before I turn it over to Mark, who's a very capable advocate for what's being done here, I just, a couple of items I wanted to specifically mention. One, this board granted a prior variance for parking, three and a half or four years ago when the 110 grill and the Starbucks went in. So when that was done, the parking for the entire center reduced to 799 spaces. As things exist today, there are 800 spaces on site, so one more than the minimum required. Because we're adding a little space, if you look at the, the handout, the purple rectangle you can see, where it says proposed building addition 2,850 square feet, that negates the variance. So we're, we're starting, we're starting over and looking at what the ordinance actually requires.
Oh, right, because once you have a new plan, that variance is going to be...
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's, you know, that's code enforcement's interpretation, I do not agree with that.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you look at this plan, where it says proposed gym 23,008 square feet, if there were a retail use there, the zoning ordinance requirement for parking would be 984 parking spaces. If there is a gym use there, the zoning ordinance requirement for parking is 1,172 spaces. Because once you go non-retail by more than a certain percentage in a shopping center, it changes how you calculate the parking. So when we first started this process, Bricksmore thought they had a gym user, and at the present moment, they don't. But what we're proposing is 769 spaces on site irrespective of whether that back piece, and that is, I drove around the center today, that's back in a hole, whether that back space is occupied by a retail user or a gym user. The second thing is, or the third thing is, that our original plans had a higher-than-indicated request for signage on the rear of the building facing I-93. In speaking with David Hall about the plans, he thought that was what we had proposed, which is essentially double what is shown on the public notices, was too big. And we reduced it down to about 90 square foot per the four tents. So the public notice that says 570 square feet is accurate. What we also did is we reduced the height of the proposed signs in the rear to a level that they are equal to the flat roof on the site so that the variance, original variance request from 2867F to permit building signs with any points located higher than the plate of a flat roof is moved, we are withdrawing that request.
But not the areas?
Not the areas. The areas are correct and we still, we still have those requests. The last thing, I think some people on the board might know this, is that the Chamber of Commerce has a license agreement for 50 spaces over by the Marshals Building. They used to monitor and patrol the site, now they don't. Now it's just a straight, they pay a monthly fee. And I had assumed wrongly, I talked to Tim Sink this week about this, I'd assumed that the Chamber employees use some of those spaces, but they don't. They sublease those spaces or they rent them out to other employees and merchant owners up on Main Street or elsewhere that have trouble parking. And it's a little revenue generator for the Chamber. As things sit right now, because we don't have a tenant for the rear space, nothing would happen to the Chamber. They would be allowed to continue going forward. That might need to be adjusted somehow. Tim Sink is aware of that and is aware that the center needs to be revitalized. And we're in communication with Tim Sink in the Chamber, but I just wanted to mention that to the board.
So the parking the Chamber's using belongs to Bricksmore?
It does.
But how does that jive with your variance? I mean, if you have a variance, or, and so you're not, but you're not, all the spots are not available to you.
Well, they are, it's a monthly license agreement that we could terminate at will, 30-day notice. It's terminable, I think it even, it's even 10 days' notice. Yeah, and given the fact that they're not even using it and unbeknownst to us until very, until this past week, that they're actually subleasing those spaces out to some, to other people, you know...
This could be a tough conversation.
Just for the record, the variance that was approved to parking years ago did include the fact that they were going to lease...
Oh, that was known at the time.
It was mentioned and it's included in the minutes, yes.
Oh, okay, good.
And, and we've had previous, our property manager has had previous conversations with Mr. Sink and we've made them aware over the years that we've been studying the redevelopment of this property and likely would have to end the license agreement at some point. The last thing I wanted to say before I turn it over to Mark is if you look at the first sheet on the handout, the only changes other than signage that we're making to the center are the changes in color. And one of the changes, and this, we're still in discussion with planning staff about this, is this sidewalk that the city says is ADA required if we open a new entrance to the rear of the center. There might be other ways to, to provide the access that the city wants, it might be ADA required. We're, we're still evolving with this, but this is, this is the city-preferred alternative and that has chipped away at some of the parking, creating the need for the parking variance in addition to the fact that we've added the 2,000... the parking variance in addition to the fact that we've added the 2,850 square feet.
So is the ADA sidewalk the one we see there in colored?
Yes, yes.
And there's a, is that an island or something that goes across that's sort of?
It's a crosswalk.
It's a crosswalk to landscape islands.
Okay, all right. So that oblong shade.
Because we're taking away some landscaping and so.
Adding in the island makeup for it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what I've got for housekeeping. An alternative over to Mark, who can really explain what they're trying to do here.
Hi, everybody. So to try to not drag this out too long, the story is that for the last five years, we have known that Burlington, which operates this whole box that you're looking at on your first page, 77,000-square-foot Burlington store, that they've wanted to downsize now for the last five years. We've been working with them, as we have at other properties in our portfolio, to try to downsize them. But we really haven't been able to facilitate downsizing their store until we had a viable plan for the remainder of the space and secured some level of commitments from other retailers. Today, we've got commitments from four retailers. Besides Burlington, we've got commitments from three retailers in the front. So that's four new retailers in the front of this space. And we have 23,000 square feet in the rear still remaining. We thought we had a deal with a gym user. That deal fell through. We'd still like to market it to a proposed gym user. We think fitness is an excellent use for the rear of a box like this. And just a little shopping center lesson, when you've got a 77,000-square-foot box like this, the projects where you have to split them up into smaller spaces, there's always challenges in the depth of the spaces. And the rear use is always the toughest to sort of lease to somebody. A lot of the retailers don't want to take spaces, go that far back. And so at this point, that space still remains not committed. But as you'll see later, we're going to propose some enhanced signage back there, which we think will help attract retailers to that rear space. And we've been in conversation too with members of the planning staff over the years to discuss other possibilities. And we've been studying it for a long time. We're really happy with this plan because it'll, and I'll walk you through it a little bit. Basically, it's just a redemise and a subdivision of the Burlington store, taking Burlington down to 22,000 square feet and then adding three new retail spaces in front and a retail space or a gym space or some other use in the rear. The only changes, as we were discussing before, to this box are an additional 2,850 square feet in the front. And that's just to square off the building. Because today, it's sort of, if you've walked it, you see it divots back there and it's sort of in pretty bad shape. And so the idea is to square it off and make that space on the left flush with the other spaces so that they all have the same frontage on Store Street. The other changes are basically creating a new addition to the rear space, that proposed gym space, of an entrance there so that it could be used for a gym or for a store. And in conversations with the municipality, with Concord, we believe that we're also going to have to create an ADA sidewalk. This whole project, as a result, loses, I think the count was, the number of spaces that we lose, 31 spaces are lost from having to create this new entrance and the sidewalks here and losing some of the striped spaces in the back because of the need for a sidewalk. That's really the only changes. And we're here basically today to seek variances for, I believe one is a setback variance for a loading dock in the rear. It's going to be a shared loading dock that goes back no further than the existing loading dock that's servicing Burlington today. And the reduction in parking. And then when we were in front of planning staff going through our project, we were discussing the signage. And we said, you know, we're going from, basically have Burlington, now you're going to have four stores in front and one store in back. You're going to have five. And they said, we think what you should do, because it's going to require, every one of those signs is going to need a variance. So they proposed that we should come up with a master sign plan for the property, which we've done. And so I'm going to flip you through the pages here very quickly just to show you what we're proposing to do. Part of the project too is a new facade. It's going to be a facade renovation for that Burlington box to facilitate the new stores in front. On the bottom of that second page would be the space all the way to the right, which would be Burlington and the new facade. And then above it, you'd see the three tenants that line up next to it. So everything on this page is basically Store Street, how it's going to look facing Store Street. The next page, that little Burlington sign that you see, that is, if I could show you where it is on the site plan, that is.
Side of the building.
Side of the building. On the right side of the Burlington building, there's a sign there today. Burlington has a little sign there today. And this is basically just replacing it with an updated sign. The next page shows the left side of the Burlington box. And it shows that new entrance for that rear user. Because we think that this is going to be a very tough space to lease, we're reaching out to the municipality to help us with this by allowing us to have some enhanced signage here. So we're proposing sort of an enhanced storefront here with some pretty visible signage that definitely goes above your code allows for.
This is the page that says northwest elevation?
Yes, yes. So on the plan, that is in the left corner where that new proposed entrance is going to be for that rear space. And if you can imagine, that's in between I-93. It's tucked way back there and it's going to be hard to see.
It's behind Marshals. You don't even know that space is there unless you drive looking for it.
Right.
Does that parking behind Marshals already exist?
Yes.
It does?
Yes. Absolutely.
I've lived there pretty much since fifth grade, except for like six, two.
That's what the Chamber leases.
That's what the Chamber leases back there. And that's where you're losing spaces. I also want to make clear that the parking spaces that you're losing are all in that left rear corner. You're not losing spaces anyplace else in the property.
Yeah.
So in many respects, we are losing spaces because of creating the new entrance in the sidewalk. But all the spaces are in the far left corner.
I mean, I can kind of picture it now because if you go to the bank, you see it, but you never think of it when you're going to the plaza.
Right. People that are entering from the front are, yeah. So hopefully, if we have a gym back there, it will be used by members of the gym.
Yeah.
So the next page, the northeast elevation, is the rear of the Burlington space. This is the side that faces I-93. We felt that this was a chance for us, if you look all the way to the right, that would be the sign that would be for that same rear space, but it would be around the corner facing I-93. So they would have two signs, one on the side and one around the corner facing I-93. So they would have basically a corner piece, right?
Is it going to be visible, like as you're driving on I-93? Or is it going to be kind of hidden by the?
Well, we hope so. It goes above the roof line. But, yes.
I thought we just said that variance is taken off the table.
No, these four.
Those four. Flip to the next page, I'm sorry.
No, but when you opened up the meeting, you said, I thought you said.
Yeah, so I forgot that one is still above the roof line, that one.
But just for that space.
You do still need that variance as to that one.
I do for that one side, but not, if you flip the page, they've reduced these four inline tenants' signs.
Right, right. So also, on that same page, you see the four tenant signs there, the rear signs for the tenants that have storefront signs on Store Streets. We originally showed that as sort of an enhanced sign band, like a lit-up feature at night. All the same color, sort of a prominent, what we thought would be attractive to people driving down the street as opposed to each retailer having their different branding and color on the back of the building, which we don't think looks very attractive. But what we've done now is we've lowered it so that this drawing shows it above the roof line. We've agreed to lower it and we've agreed to reduce these signs to, they were what, 180 square feet originally? And we agreed to reduce each one to 90 square feet.
And that's shown on the last page.
Right. Essentially, the visibility for those tenants on I-93 is not as critical because they have frontage on Store Street. They're going to have signs that face Store Street. We'd like to have signs on the rear of the building as well. But those ones were a little easier for us to agree to a lesser sign than that corner one, because the corner one is the tough space to lease. That's the tenant that's not going to have any sign on Store Street.
But having that visibility from I-93, I mean, that's kind of a plum selling point for a tenant, right? I mean, because that gives them kind of some good marketing.
It's going to help us lease that rear space because right now, we're having a tough time with it.
It also distracts you from everything that's on the ground right outside the highway. Does Burlington already have a sign on the back of the building?
Yes.
I thought so, okay.
Which they got by variance.
Yes, yeah.
Can I interrupt you to help me follow that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Brenda.
Go ahead, yeah.
So the changes you're talking about now, are those changes reflected in the application that's before us? Or are you saying the application has been changed?
The very last page of the handout.
The only change was that, right, was the reduction of the four tenants on the rear from 180 feet for each sign, 180 square feet, to 90 square feet. So we essentially cut it in half and lowered it to the roof line.
But.
Everything else stays the same.
But the application before us was based upon 180 square feet, not 90 square feet? It's not, if you're asking for less, I understand, but.
What we originally submitted had the 180, however many square feet. We met with Mr. Hall and then we reduced it. And the public notice shows the correct square footage shown on the last page here.
Okay, so let you finish and then I'll get to this.
So the next page essentially was, you know, one of the requirements is that we prepare a plan showing existing signage, which this does. And that's, actually, the next two pages are the plan showing existing signage. And the third page after that shows, it's a key showing where the existing signage is today. So the next three pages are essentially the existing sign plan.
Where would the monument sign go on the site?
Where, we've probably been clarified that. We pulled that from the monument sign. We pulled that from the application as well.
Oh, so you're not asking for that?
Not today, no.
I have a question, David.
A lot of businesses depend on a monument.
In the case of the sign that they're proposing for the for the rear space, the one that might or might not ever be a gym, the entire building appears to be raised in that area where they've.
Oh, there might be a parapet there.
Right. If that parapet is still below the maximum allowable roof height, would that not be considered the roof height?
Yes. I guess the parapet wouldn't be below the roof height unless I'm understanding what you're asking.
No, if the parapet's below the allowable roof height. In other words, if you're not, if the building is not taller than it is allowed to be.
No, no. The sign ordinance does not want signs projecting over a roof line.
Parapet notwithstanding.
Right. So the parapet, the top of the parapet to me would become the max that the sign should not go over that roof line. What the visible roof line is.
Is that true across all zones?
Yes. That's how the sign ordinance reads.
Do we have exceptions that we know of that we've made to putting a sign above a roof line?
Not that I'm aware of in my time.
But I'm just envisioning it's. We've said no to some of them. Yeah. But it seems like if you drive around, they're definitely out there. Maybe not.
Well, there definitely are situations where the, in retail buildings, where they raise up the facade, put a sign up in there.
Oh, right, right.
You can't really tell what's behind it, something or nothing.
They've raised, right.
They raised the facade to make it work.
But what we're hearing is that isn't a raised facade, that's a parapet. Parapets are not nice and polite society when it comes to signs, at least not in Concord. Okay, gentlemen, I interrupted. Is there?
No, no, that's very good questions. So the next page was really, this is just an illustration of signage today as we get into the conversation about allowable signage at the center and what we're requesting. We were asked to sort of take a look at what exists today in the market, what exists at our center so that we can provide some context. So this next page is basically the market basket sign today for the store that's there. And that is 309 square feet to give you some sense of proportion. Because your sign code is based upon the frontage, the linear frontage of a building. And it's not necessarily based on the distance to the street where signage is seeking to have visibility. So we wanted to give you a sense of what that market basket sign at 309 square feet looks like from Store Street today as you consider what we're requesting. The next sign study is a mock-up of an aerial photo essentially, of a photo, showing how the proposed signage that we're requesting would look on the Burlington building, on that box, from Store Street. So that you also have some sense of proportion so that we don't just look at the numbers and say, well, you're asking for 309 square feet and the code only allows for 90 square feet. We want to make sure that you're understanding the request in context and as we see it from Store Street, as we believe it will be seen from Store Street.
We're on the third to the last page with the white van in the corner.
So a question I have is, while I think having a master plan for this sign variance is a good idea, a lot of these companies that come before us with sign variances are because they, their corporate had a very specific sign design that has to be approved. What happens with that if they have to come back to us? They're just, it's another variance to the variance?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what you're asking. Let me please clarify one thing. Their master sign plan that they're talking about has not been approved by the city.
No.
So it's their plan, but it hasn't gone to the planning board. It hasn't gone to ADR. It hasn't been reviewed by anybody other than, here's what they want to present.
Right, but that's what they're asking us for, right?
Not your role, technically. So you're going to be granting variances for a master sign plan that was not approved or even seen by anybody of substance as far as planning.
Well, we were told that we needed to get variances before going before the planning board.
But you're just presenting this as a master sign plan and I'm just cautioning you, it's their plan, but the city's never seen it.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind and.
But I just wanted to say one thing about that. I was involved in the pylon sign for the Flatley Building over on 393.
Very street, yeah.
And we were required to submit a master sign plan and all that meant at the time is show all of the existing signs on the property so that anybody reviewing the proposed signs could figure them out. So what we're referring to as the master sign plan is just the layout here showing all of the existing signs. That's it. We're not looking for approval. It exists.
That's the existing master sign plan. But just, and just to clarify, because I think that's a very good question. When we came before this board, four years ago, three years ago, on the three hour parcels, we did not come in seeking any sign variances. Each one of those tenants came in and sought their own sign variances. That's what you're used to seeing.
Yeah.
When we were in front of the planning staff and going through this last April, if not even earlier, maybe even last fall, they said, given the complexity of this and the fact that you're now proposing to break this space up and add a whole bunch of signage, we would prefer if you would come in with one request. Sort of come in and with the quote, "master sign plan" for what you want to do, not to be confused with the master sign plan of what's there today. But show us what you want to do in the way of signage for everybody. Now, that added a little complication in that on the four leases that we've secured and that we've signed, we've had to be very careful about language in the lease that says that they're subject to this sign, they're subject to what we come up with, with the master sign plan. So the retailers, they want us to include an exhibit in the lease that shows their signage. They want us to be okay with it. And then if there's a variance that's needed, they'll go get it. This is a different situation because we were told by the planning staff that they wanted us to come in and sort of get it all done at one time. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So we've had to, each one of these leases, each one of these leases basically has had to qualify. It's included some language in there saying, you're subject to whatever Bricksmore gets approved by the town. And we know to some degree what their points of pain are. And they understand that this is all subject to review and approval.
Can you disclose at this time who they are or?
I can only disclose Burlington. The other three tenants that are in front cannot. They're all retail uses, we're very. The other three tenants that are in front cannot, they're all retail uses, we're very excited about them. I think they're gonna make a great addition. But we've been told that we're not authorized to mention their names quite yet.
Sure.
It's just us and everyone else.
Just us and the television audience.
No, we think, we think it's gonna be, they're all, they're all, they're, they're, they're soft goods. They're apparel and, and products, no services, all products, all shopping.
So, question for the cities.
No dollars.
In front of us is a variance for the signs to permit five building signs on the front, to permit five on the rear.
Four, yeah, five in the rear, four in the front.
Okay, it says here, five on the front. But you say four on the front, five on the rear.
The little guy in the sign, yeah, yes, five, there's five.
Five, okay, five on the front, five on the rear, one on each of the sides. So we are approving?
You're gonna, if you vote to approve, you're gonna approve the square footage that they are asking for.
Okay.
So I appreciate your ambitions of the, the Store Street and you've made your decisions in the past based on visibility and the hardship of being set back, I understand that. I think the city has a concern about the sign extending over the roof line and the size of the signs along ninety-three. But I don't know if they gave us renditions for that.
But Dave, I know this, we, I know this has been, every time I, I ask a similar question, the, the number of signs doesn't require variances, the total square footage, is that right? Because they're not asking for a variance at the number of signs, I don't believe.
No, they're not asking, they're, they're, they're just saying they're gonna have five signs. Each retailer obviously needs a sign in front of their building that's been well established by us administratively.
Yeah.
The size of that has been established also that we usually use the front, the square footage of the front. And then the board has typically gone, I think I'd call it more from an architectural design, is this look right, is it too big, too small? And we don't have any equation that says, you know, if you're gonna be a hundred feet back, we're gonna go at a hundred, ten percent of the, the frontage.
And I apologize, I know you're probably not done, I just.
No, we actually are, we are done. And, and we'd be happy to walk through each one of those signs, discuss what we've requested and, 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 and talk a little about, a little bit about it in context so that you can make a decision.
Before we do anything like that.
I didn't answer out loud on the record.
Yeah. All, all the signs then on the highway side are there by variance, correct?
I'm sorry, all the signs on the highway?
On the, on the highway side.
Have a variance.
Would, would require, do require a variance?
Absolutely.
And all the ones that are there now are there by variance?
Correct.
Which is distinct from what you were just describing, which are the signs on the front of the building, the Store Street side of the building where they're, you said they were all worked out as far as how big they could be and so on?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I believe that each of the tenants on the new part of the shopping center, each came in and got a variance of some.
Yep, to have two signs.
Yeah, I remember Xfinity and.
They have two front doors, yeah.
You, we're, we're talking now about the building with Starbucks and all that?
Right, I thought you were talking about just the storefront for these five.
I was talking about the, the original shopping center, not, not.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so those are, that's, and, because that's all we're talking about. We're not talking about the other building at this point.
Correct, we're talking about the, the four new retail places, the fifth one behind. The four new retails in the front, they gave you a rendition of what that looks like. That's gonna require them to get a, a variance to allow for, for the front of the building, where is it here?
Well, yeah, I think on one of the pages we specify exactly how much square footage and also specify what the code allows.
Right, for each?
So it, it, it definitely spells it out. And, and I would also say that this is really about taking this space that was once a big box and now you're splitting it up and you're sort of locking in what's gonna be the signage going forward. So if one of these tenants leaves and another one comes, this is what we approve. We approved three hundred for, for this space that has eighty feet of frontage, that is six thousand, whatever, eight thousand square feet. This is the signage that we allowed and this is what you guys are stuck with. It's part of a master sign plan for this entire subdivided space.
Right, okay.
I've got a few questions, Chris.
Please, please.
Yeah, so let's start with parking. So you, I'm trying to understand the, in the alternative. So you're saying your first preference is to, well, let me back up and say, what triggered all of this is that twenty-eight hundred square foot building?
Right, and, and also frankly, it's, it's twenty-eight, it's the twenty-eight hundred square foot addition.
Right.
And creating that little entrance in the rear for that space in the back required us to lose some spaces back there. So we were at the threshold before.
Yeah, okay.
And, and as soon as you increase the square footage and lower the number of spaces, you're need a variance right off the bat.
Yep, okay, so if we approve seven hundred and sixty-nine, where eleven hundred and seventy-two required, that presumes that you'll be a gym and not retail activity in that backspace.
That gives us the flexibility to bring in a gym and not have to come back here.
So if we approved only the seven sixty-nine where nine eighty-four required, that would limit?
That would limit us to taking that rear space to, to leasing it for retail or other, whatever else your code allows.
Shopping center, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Then I have a flip question for code enforcement, which is how many parking places you need if you put a police station back there? If you put a police station in that backspace?
I don't know what the square footage is, but that's not gonna happen.
It's an excellent idea, I think. So, okay.
Am I in the same meeting you are?
All right, so what you, your preference would be to have more flexibility for that backspace, I get it. But it's still four hundred and three spaces more than would, than you're allowed, which is like forty percent more, right?
I, I'm, I'm missing that calculation.
If you want to put a gym in, you need one thousand one hundred and seventy-two spaces.
Yes, yes.
You're saying, no, we want relief to only put seven hundred and sixty-nine spaces.
Right.
So that, you're four hundred short.
We were three hundred and whatever short before.
Well, you have seven ninety-nine now, right?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
If I may.
But without a gym?
Without a gym.
Without a gym.
Yep.
But, but again, that entrance for the gyms is all the way in the rear and all those spaces.
I'm just trying to understand what's in front of us.
Yeah, yeah.
And we all, we, we, I've expressed to this board in the past, the city knows they have to change, look at their ordinance, we're gonna get there, parking is one of them. I liken this to the altitude that we talked about for the mall needing twelve hundred spaces.
So we should wait for the city council, so?
It's coming pretty fast, right? We're gonna get there.
Well, but I, I mean, I think we've heard particularly when we're putting this up front, it's a very dense parking lot now, you know, so.
Yep, that's fair.
Somebody, did you want to interrupt with it?
No.
All right, so that's it, I'm, I understand the parking request now. And then I, I want to look at the signage requests rather than the, you know, the nine different signs. We just want to look at it from the square footage. So on the front of the building, we're asking, you, you, you're allowed to do three hundred and sixty-six square feet. You're asking for nine hundred and ninety square feet. What I don't know is how many square feet are used now by the single Burlington Coat Factory?
Oh, Burlington today uses, Sean, we have that number, right?
Yes, today on the front Burlington is around.
They're not using close to what they're entitled to from a linear.
Well, they're entitled to three sixty-six.
Right, if you're looking at the linear frontage of the building, yes.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Hundred and twelve on the front and a hundred and?
Yeah, about a hundred, a hundred and twelve on the front, a hundred and twelve on the side, so.
But I, but I would also point out that, that Market Basket, right now, has a three hundred and, so that Market Basket sign is three hundred and ten square feet and they only have two hundred and twelve square feet of frontage. So they're operating at forty-seven percent above what they're allowed. And the Marshalls sign, in total, the two signs that Marshalls has today is two hundred and sixty-two square feet when they only have a hundred and forty linear feet of frontage. They're operating at an eighty-eight percent increase in signage above what the code allows.
But looked at it differently, you're asking for two hundred and fifty, three hundred percent more than you're allowed.
But if we look at the spaces as four spaces in the front, that's not what we're asking for. So if each one of those spaces was looked at as a separate space and you looked at their frontage, the space all the way to the left, that's eighty-one, oh, that's eighty-one linear feet, so they're entitled to eighty-one square feet of frontage and we're asking for two?
Well, no, they're not, they're not entitled to it because it's not a separate building.
Right, that's.
Oh, that's per building, not per space?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem.
Right.
For chopping this space up into four separate uses.
Right.
So how did that work with the other new building?
Same way, that's what I'm saying, typically we've looked at the linear frontage of their portion of the building. And that's how we've tried to establish how many square feet they can have.
So what do we treat?
As you're well aware, there are more than one companies come here saying, we need more square footage than you can give us.
But I think that's a real hiccup in the code because if you take a space and you have five tenants in it and each one has a certain amount of frontage, they're, they're not gonna be able to get anything that's visible to the street.
But we deal with it with downtown businesses all the time, right?
But this is, first of all, I would argue that this is a little further away, Store Street's a little further from the front.
We deal with buildings all, and I.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, but this, this.
Right, but the code does not do a good job with multi-sided buildings, I will say that.
No, no, it doesn't. Every single building that needs a second side has had to come to us.
That may be intentional, John, too, because it's a question of how much, you know, if, when Dave Parker was here, we wouldn't, you know, sign meetings one forever because his view was.
We're getting there.
Then, then, yeah.
That's, that's why we put in that sign study. So, so that one page, and I'm sorry we didn't number the pages of this, but that sign study that shows what this signage will look like from Store Street.
It's minimal.
It's, it's, it's very, it's very, what's the word? It's, it's proportionate and tasteful, it's not, it's not big glaring signs.
No.
Okay.
I have a question.
Massive building will set back, well, set back from Store Street.
It's so set back, yeah.
I, I have a question about the encroachment of seventy-three square feet, where, where, explain that to me.
Let's go to the very first page of the handout.
Yeah.
It's on the screen if you want to.
That's the dumpster.
Oops, that's a new loading dock to the rear of the building. It's labeled on this plan, proposed loading platform.
It sticks out to the railroad tracks?
Towards the railroad tracks, yes.
Okay, so that, that, it says, existing?
Well, there's, there's one back there today.
Okay.
And we're proposing a new one. And the new one doesn't extend from the building any further back than the one that's there today. So Burlington today has a loading platform back there that goes back, how many feet? This is why, so I have to give my team this here.
It's thirteen feet off the property line.
Right.
And so the new one that we're proposing is thirteen feet off the same property, right? Same property line.
So the, so the existing one is already in violation?
Correct.
Off the property, off the building line.
Okay.
Off the property line.
How far back is it from the building? Because it's far enough from the property line that there's, there's the driveway, right? There's the fact that we've got the.
Right. I think it looks like twenty, twenty-six minus thirteen, thirteen? Roughly twelve probably off the building.
Right, so this is essentially just putting another loading platform.
Right.
To, 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 to serve two of those stores.
Your paved area, does your paved area then go off your property?
Paved area goes off the property.
Oh, I see.
And that paved area is, there's an easement that we have to that property railroad.
All right, that's not before us tonight in any case.
One other sign question.
All right, you go for it.
The, are you losing the architectural peak that's on the Burlington Coat Factory now? And does that reduce the frontage?
Yeah, gable that's up there?
Yeah.
Yes, the gable is getting removed, but based on the code, it's linear frontage, so I don't believe that affects anything.
Okay, right.
All right.
I guess the, sorry, Nick, go ahead.
I've got some parking questions.
Go for it, I mean.
Although you're reducing the, the Burlington property substantially, their, their traffic count's gonna be the same. And I guess I'm concerned about the additional traffic that three new retail people are gonna present to that area. Now, I usually, when I go into this mall, I usually come into the northernmost entrance and I'm always amazed at how all those spaces are full, as well as the ones in front of Joanne and the liquor store. And it's not till you get to Market Basket that you have some pretty much available spaces. So I, I guess I'd like you to speak to the amount of additional traffic these three new retailers are gonna present to this particular parking area, because I don't know where they're gonna park. I think you're just increased activities in this area and I don't think you can accommodate them in this area.
Well, first of all, I would argue that we're gonna do a better job of policing our parking lot right now, which has a lot of people that park there that are working and shopping in downtown Concord.
And you know that'll get worse when they tear down the Store Street parking garage, the legislative parking garage.
That, that, the one that's at the end of our center, so to speak, the one that goes over Store Street?
Yeah, that's being, that's being torn down in the next year or two.
I, I'd say that, you know, overall, right now, you've got seventy-seven thousand square feet of retail. And is it being as fully utilized as it could be when you've got four retailers in there? I, I think that probably will be busier with the four stores that are in there. But I think that their uses are not high, they're not, none of them are restaurants, none of them are the type of stores that are gonna be, it's not a new grocery store, it's not a sort of a concept that's gonna drive tremendous amounts of traffic. They're all sort of what I would call sort of basic goods, more or less. And I think that the traffic will be, I think, the same overall. I think it will, yeah, I would say that it's gonna be the same overall.
There's unused parking to the rear, behind the Marshalls that people are gonna need to use.
But are you, I think you hinted this, are you continuing to see a problem with people parking for downtown, trying to park at your place for free to go downtown? And how are you, how would you police that? I mean, I know you want to, but how would you?
We've, we've hired a company to help us police the parking area at the center because it used to be policed by the Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce, that was part of the license agreement with them to allow them to use the parking in the rear, was that they said, well, we'll have somebody come by and make sure. We know it's proximity to downtown people are parking the property that aren't really supposed to be there. And we changed our agreement with them over time and decided to do it ourselves. And I think we need to increase it a little bit, it is busy in front.
Yeah, I think you might find a lot of people that are going into these, from the sounds of it, since you won't hint to us too much about what's going in there. Hint, hint, no, I'm just kidding. It sounds to me like a lot of the same people are going to hit all of these various places, you know, and.
That's definitely how it works with shopping centers, is you do have cross, you do have cross shopping.
It's nice to see they're all gonna be in that close little cluster and people can come in and out of those same various stores where the rest of the plaza's kind of various uses, you know?
Yeah.
Joanne's people aren't necessarily going into Marshalls, you know, there, there are variations. I wish there was a way to put a path between the building and Marshalls, but you've got those loading docks there, because that would have made better use of the back parking.
There's, there's, long term, we think that there might be activity on that side of the property.
Yeah.
We don't know if Marshals is gonna stay committed to staying at this property. We've suffered from having a lot of the retail traffic go to the corridor allowed and across the river. And, you know, it took us five years to come up with this plan. It took us a long time to solicit, to, to get commitments from retailers that we think will be successful here and serve the community. It's, we're, we're here when you come in for a variance is because you don't have other options. We've looked at adding parking, we've looked at adding, you know, we've looked at figuring out how we could restripe it. The only parking that we're losing is all the way in the corner.
Yeah.
I'm really stuck with a, you know, we, we don't think that the property is viable anymore as a seventy-seven thousand square foot retail box.
No.
So we think that the plan to break it up and put these new spaces in front with the, with the, you know, proposed gym in back is, this was an evolution. We've looked at a lot of different things and we feel that this is the best thing that we can do. And we, we, it's, it's gonna be a busy park. And we, we, it's, it's going to be a busy park, it's going to be a busy shopping center, one that's close to a proximity to a downtown, but we think that that's very efficient.
Better than the dying one it was-
Unlike a lot of our shopping centers in other parts of the country that have big parking lots that don't get properly utilized, that frankly are not what, what the direction is these days.
I think my only concern is the signs being above the-
Well, we'll talk about that. Is there anything else he'd likes to know? Is there any, are there any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate all of your thoughtful questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir.
That will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have multiple requests here.
I think we should take them separately.
Yes, I agree.
Usually do, yeah.
Why don't we start with the variances to permit building signs with any points located higher than the plate above the flat roof? We heard testimony that the, there is one, actually two building signs, because it goes around a corner, where that would be the case, which would be for the tenant who would be on the east side of the building, which, who is yet to be identified. The other signs that were shown in the original drawings would now be dropped so that their tops would not be above the top of the roof. So it would be just the corner, which says tenant, but then that doesn't distinguish it from too many of these signs. So, discussion on that one. Starting, let's see, is it Mark or Brenda that's in on this one?
Me.
It's you. Okay, what do you think, Brenda?
I'm just concerned if it sets a precedent. I'm, I'm trying to rack my brain picturing, like, you know, downtown stores, if I can picture any other buildings having a sign over the top, and I can't. And it just concerns me if we're going to start a, well, you let them have it, we want it too, kind of situation.
That's the, the problem of it being above.
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't we do that with the Romford Press Building last year? I don't think I was on that.
The old Romford Press Building, the, uh-
Uh, Ferry Street.
I thought we had one, one sign on top of the building there.
I wasn't directly involved, but I don't know.
They've been done stuff above the second floor, right?
I don't remember one on top of the building, like the old Lammiskeck Back sign in Manchester.
I know the Raleigh agencies came and asked for that. We denied it.
Yeah. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to agree that I, I'm, let me rephrase that. I'm, I'm not inclined to grant that one, because I don't, and I, and I know that we don't set precedent, but, but with the, with the sign variances, we're just continuously getting them. And I do think, you know, in fairness, we, we need to be consistent. And previewing my thought on the other one, I know it's, I don't think ask on that one is excessive compared to a lot of others we've granted, and given the total circumstances. So I, I mean, I'm, I want to, I'm, I'm leaning towards approving, or voting to approve as to the total square footage. Although, I do hear some concerns of my colleagues on that, and I think they, they have legitimate concerns. But on the, on the height one, I, I am inclined to deny.
Okay. Mr. Mahan?
Um, I am trying to look at, kind of, all the sign and stuff is a great big package. So, um, and I guess in some respects, their property, if they want to cram in too much parking and too much signage, I'm struggling to figure out, you know, what's the community interest in, unless, but, I don't know.
Mr. Waller?
I guess we haven't done a sign above as they're requesting. So again, it's a precedent issue for me. I don't, I don't know if I'm inclined to set a precedent.
Okay. Oh, did, sorry to interrupt. Did we do it on the, um, the antiques? The Concord Antiques? Is that?
I don't think it's above-
It's above the second floor, right?
Above the second floor.
It's above, yeah, it's above their storefront, but it's not-
So, oh, we disapproved the size on that one?
Yeah, well, it's also up where you can see it off Bridge Street, but that-
Okay.
That was a variance.
Right, okay, thank you.
I can't picture one above-
My feeling about this is that the sign ordinance, especially as it applies downtown, envisions something rather different than this shopping center. That it envisions a series of relatively narrow storefronts going down the street with a sign on each one and a separate business in each one. The scale of this location, the distance back from the street, the scale and distance from the highway, all say to me that this is a different animal. It happens to be downtown, technically speaking, but it really is in style like a suburban shopping mall, or strip mall. And so for that reason, I think the entire composition, including the way it sits on its site, creates a hardship for signage if you are inclined to enforce the ordinance as it's written. So my impulse here would be, again, as Mr. Mahan suggested, to look at the entire package. And when I look at it, it looks to me like a reasonable use, given the context. And I think that's a suitable justification for variance. So that's how I would look at it. I would support their request for changes in the sign, or-
Including the height?
Including the height, yeah. Now, if they don't get the height, I don't think they're going to go out of business. But I, 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 that's how I look at it. I think it's, uh, it's a rather different situation than what the sign ordinance contemplates. And that leaves aside the whole issue of whether the sign ordinance is really doing its job anymore.
Mr. Chair, if I may, depending on how the board goes, if you do approve it as a blanket square footage, I would like it to be approved as presented on their plan. So if they ever go back to one store, we don't have one store with a 580 square foot sign.
Right?
Right.
Good point.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So it's conditional on the submission that they made, including that last page where the signs are shrunk down in the back, whatever page it was.
I just wanted to react to that a little bit. First, you know, I guess I had a different vision for Store Street that shouldn't really influence what's before us tonight, but I thought when the combination of removing the elevated, the city parking garage, and continuing Store Street eventually to 393 creates the opportunity for kind of a second Main Street in Concord. And what we're kind of heading down the path you described is, yeah, except we're going to stick a suburban shopping mall in the middle of what could be, um, the second Main Street.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, only the, the one issue I would take with it is it's already there.
Yeah.
As opposed to a due, a proposed due.
See, my concern with the elevated is-
Sorry, Brenda.
That's okay. My concern with the elevated is that we'll see more of those, the new businesses come up wanting that elevation because of the highway.
No, I think we can deal with those individually as they do. I, okay, so-
Did we, did you, did we hear from you? Did we hear from Nick on-
On the sign, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, sorry, Nick.
Yeah, we did. So, let's see, we started with, uh-
So do you want-
Building signs, let's, let's take them one at a time. Let's start with 2867F, to permit building signs with any points located higher than the plate above the flat roof. And we're talking about two signs on the corner, in the northeast corner of the building, nowhere else, based on their submission. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion not to approve.
You can do that. Make a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, it's in a discussion. All in favor of motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Everyone opposed? Nay. It sounds like the vote is four to one with the chair and the minority, and the variance is denied. Let's go now to section 2869B1 to permit five building signs on the front of the building with a total of 990 square feet, where 366 square feet are permitted, and five on the rear of the building with a total area of 570 square feet, and one sign on each side face of the building at 111 and 228 square feet. Do I hear a motion on that?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
With the conditions?
Oh, with the-
With the conditions-
Based on the plan and five units.
With the conditions of the plan that's been submitted.
Yeah, the sign plan, the whole configuration, and not something new. I would have to come back to this. Oh, good.
I'll second that approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded with the conditions noted. Is there any further discussion on that one?
Yeah, I'm going to vote to approve, just, you know, observing that it's a lot.
And, yeah, and I agree it's a lot, and I, and I agree with what, what you guys said, that it, it's a tough, this is a tough location. I think everyone in the city probably has an opinion about it, and I, I would not want to own this spot. I think they're doing a really good job. I think they did a good job with adding the, the front building, but to me, it's still really up in the air what the, how this is all going to work out. But I, I, I think, given that, and it's a very important location for the city, I, I think giving them some leeway to try to market it the best they can is, is appropriate.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted. And now down to, or let's go back up to the variance concerning parking spaces. Permit 769 spaces where 1172 are required, or in the alternative, where 984 reduced to 799 by 22 variant, 2020 variance are required. So-
I had a code enforcement question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the 769, how do you calculate the fact that the, that the chamber had 50? So 50 of those spots are not available for the retail activity?
I'm not sure what your question is, sir. That is the way the lease that they described, they can break at any time.
It's a month come on.
So you're just going, you're granting the variance as they presented it for the numbers. They understand 50 of those spaces right now belong to the chamber, but-
So I guess I'm looking at it, those are 50 potential retail customers that are going to have to find parking somewhere else.
Just, just a reminder, the chamber's not using them. And with a 30-day notice, they can-
Right.
They can remove, they can remove that lease, so-
Or, or not. But they didn't commit to that, I mean, they didn't propose this, and we could make that a condition, that they use all the spaces for the, right? We, we could add a condition even if it wasn't proposed, right? Because they suggested they want to do it, but they didn't commit to it.
Can we do that?
I think so.
Well, they're saying they're going to have 769 parking spaces available.
Yeah.
That's it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And they own 769 spaces, so-
They'd have to.
Yeah, the details of how they get access to them, really, I don't think is our problem.
Right.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, it's their property. If their tenants are grouchy, that their customers can't find parking, they'll-
Yeah.
They'll shake it out.
They'll have to.
Yeah. So, do we have, do I have a motion on, on that one?
I'll move to approve. I just want to make sure that we articulated correctly. I want to be able to make sure that we, they were able to accommodate the gym and not just retail services.
That would be the 1172.
1172, yeah.
Right.
So it's, the motion is with the 1170, forgiveness from 1172. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moving second, is there any discussion?
In my view on this is, I, I think that it, it's a, it's a well-known problem for them, that it's being used by a lot of people downtown. That's, that's due to the unique location of it, and that's not really their fault, and that they happen to have this huge lot relative to the rest of downtown. And I, you know, so I think that it's going to be tight there almost regardless. But I, I don't, they should be penalized. I think they have enough spaces for their use. And frankly, it's really should be, I think, police or, or parking who should enforce that, you know, for the public. They, they want to do it, but I think they should get more, more assistance from parking enforcement if it becomes a problem.
In, in any case, I, I, I wouldn't argue against them getting a variance because other people aren't respecting their property.
Exactly.
Right.
So, do we have, where were we on that? Discussion, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we ready to call a vote on that one?
Yes.
We had a, we had a motion to approve at 1172 and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. And now, from section 2841H, to allow an encroachment of 73 square feet within the setback at the rear of the building. This is for the new-
Yeah, this is-
Uh, loading dock, which does the same mischief the old loading dock does.
Exactly. It's pretty, it doesn't really change much about the current, um, the current loading dock. It just adds one. And, I mean, seems like the logical place for the loading dock, so I think it's appropriate.
Would you like to make a motion?
I, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The vote is unanimous, that variance is granted. So I think all the variances, except for the height one, were granted, correct?
Well, the five signs at the rear of the building.
That was part of that.
Was part of that. That was part of that pack.
Yeah, there was a three-liner here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the one where they had agreed to take it from 180 to 90 for signs, so?
Yeah.
And that's in the record, and that's what was asked for.
Do you, do you think we have a sufficient record on that one? For our vote?
I've got a dog that needs meds.
Okay. I'm going to use the restroom while you're at this next.
You're welcome.
Chris?
Thank you.
I'm going to take off, he's going to handle the last two.
Very good.
I have a dog on a med schedule, and my son is in Canada right now.
Well, in that case, you better go deal with the dog. We do not want an unhappy doggy, or an unhappy doggy owner.
Not when he has a $10,000 platinum belly.
Oh, boy, goodness. My wife wouldn't do that for me.
I know. She'd take you out back.
That'd be it. You're healthier, you're history, fella. Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have all of these coffees?
The next case, case 0214, Three Barrels Court, OFP, Office Park Performance District. The owner is Granite Advance Corporation, and it's a variance from 2869C for two additional freestanding signs, and 2869A to allow 95 square feet of foot of signage where 40 square feet is allowed. Over here's good. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but.
I sure do.
Would you list, or, excuse me, uh-
We have to wait till-
Oh, that's right, we're missing somebody. Hang on.
All right.
You can tell us your name.
Okay. Uh, I'm Kendra Price, I'm the owner of Signorama here in Concord.
Kendra Price?
Kendra Price, yeah. Thank you.
What would you like a synonymous price?
Alrighty, so this is Three Barrel Court, formerly known as Granite State Management and Resources, and they've transferred into Granite Advance in October. They are rebranding, and they have two existing signs that have been there for, I would say, over 20 years, under 30 years, that they need switched over to a new logo. The signs stand about 300 feet away from the main road. I don't see any problems, I don't believe that it will be readable from the main road. It's just trying to get people trying to drive into the mid, into the building, driving on Barrel Court to see which building they're going into. It's a big campus, there's two front entrances to the building. So we're just trying to help out current and future customers, figure out where they're going. I don't see any problems with traffic either. I think that this will actually help with traffic, what traffic there would be on Barrel Court, as they will know where to go, and won't be stopping and trying to figure it out along the way. Um, we have two signs. I also wanted to mention that these two signs will be matching the current one that we've just placed, uh, back in March, April, earlier in the spring. So these will be all cohesive together in one piece. Um, we've got one sign at twen, just under 30 square feet, and then the other one is 36 square feet as well.
Where would, so you're asking for two new signs?
Two replacement signs, correct.
Oh, replacement signs?
Yeah.
Let me clarify, we are replacing the signs that were never permitted.
Correct.
Oh.
So when they came to us to get the rebranding, Brian Tremblay realized they were never officially permitted.
And, and they've been there, no one knows?
I don't know, a long time.
I looked on, yeah, over 20 years, it looked like.
The total of two signs, not four signs in that you have.
Correct.
What, what road is their frontage calculated off of? Because they're in between, what, Regional and Pembroke Road?
Yes. It's based, from my understanding, it's based off of Regional. I did also want to point out, I'm not too sure if this changes anything, they own that entire, all three places, so all of that is their frontage. But frontage, if I'm correct, David, if you could help me out here a little bit maybe, um, square footage is based off of the main entrance.
Right.
Frontage, so this big, huge building is only 40 because that's what, I don't have a laser, but.
Wait, what?
The frontage of the building.
It's just based off of this.
Oh, but outside, right.
That's crazy.
So Barrel Court runs?
So it's based off of the frontage of Barrel Court?
I can show you this one. There you go, Barrel Court.
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay.
And it's based on that wall that's just over the three.
So if you base it off of your frontage off Pembroke Road or Regional Drive, you could probably take, probably five.
Yeah, but we don't do signs on the street frontage.
Correct.
All our signs are done on building frontage. We've never done street signs.
Building frontage, okay.
We've never done.
I see.
Lot, lot size for signs.
Oh, I see, right, okay.
It's always been building.
Right, I understand, okay. And the sizes of the new signs, the same size as the old signs?
Uh, yes.
Would this be eligible for an equitable waiver?
I think if we would have found it, but because they're making a change.
Yeah.
It needs to get a variance, I mean.
All right. Anything else you'd like us to know?
Um, I don't, no, I don't believe so.
Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal, or in opposition to it? Comments from code enforcement?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. We'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request for variance to essentially continue the use of two signs that were not originally permitted but have been there for many years.
Right, the two black dashes are where they are, sorry.
I'll start with Mr. Waller on this one. I'm inclined to support it. I'm just trying to, um, understand the hardship on this. I guess the hardship is that, although it's a very large building, the frontage is really, is really the issue. Certainly, I don't think it's gonna be contrary to the public interest to have this. I don't think it's gonna decrease property values. I don't think it's gonna harm the public in any way. So I'm inclined to support the request for the sign. Mr. Monahan?
Yeah, I'm inclined to support. I think the way Barrel Court is laid out, it can be confusing to the public trying to find where they're going, so signage is appropriate, is, uh, okay.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, it's a, it's a very large lot, and, um, I think it's, there's Row, Pembroke Road and Regional Drive where people may be trying to find this building off of are pretty high-speed limits. So I think from a safety perspective, it's, you know, they're gonna have some visibility.
Mr. Davy?
Uh, I agree with all the above.
I agree with the colleagues.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous.
Thanks for your patience.
And the next case is case 0216, 190 Airport Road, the RS Single Family Residential District. The owner are David and, owners are David and Roberta Thompson. They want a, we're requesting a variance from Article 2841H, Table of Dimensional, Dimensions, to allow a one-foot setback from side property line where 15 feet are required. My recollection, this involves a garage. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but. Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
Sir?
And David Thompson.
We have read your app, but please run through the reasons why you feel a variance is appropriate.
Well, we're just basically replacing an, an existing garage with another one. My neighbor next door, he's totally cool with it. He was supposed to send you an email yesterday.
I've never seen him.
Came the, sorry, no address. But, yeah, the only thing with, it's a 24 by 24 garage, has to be demolished because it's all cracked, the slabs, somebody built it. It was probably a stump dump, that's what I'm guessing.
Probably a what?
A stump dump, where they dump stumps in, and they've been just settling in the whole, I mean, when I bought that house 40 years ago, the crack was about this big. Now, anything smaller than a deer could walk. I've had raccoons, skunks, everything just kind of walked through where it's all settled. But it's gonna be the same thing, we're only going eight foot.
You're gonna add eight feet?
Yeah, just straight back.
You're gonna, are you just, are you gonna, are you gonna tear out the slab and put?
Yes, the whole thing has to go.
We, we don't think they ever put, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, the Frost, perhaps never put the Frost wall in, we won't know yet, but that would explain a lot of the cracking and settling and separating. Um, and anybody can actually, a person could climb in.
Yeah.
And out without anybody knowing. We don't think that's ever happened, but, um, it's, uh, it's very unsafe, that's the other thing.
Yeah, between our grandkids coming up every once in a while, they're playing in the, I don't want the thing to collapse. My neighbor always has, you know, nieces and nephews and kids playing. They actually use the side of my garage as a soccer ball.
So what was, what was the current setback of your existing garage? Was this also a foot?
One, one foot and...
It's put a foot or two from the neighbors.
So you're maintaining the same setback that you have?
Exactly, exactly.
That's fine.
And, um...
Same height of the building?
Yeah, maybe a little bit. I may have, what, the garage we're getting is from La Valley Building in Newport. They basically prefab them up there, they bring them down. So we're just looking to get the, I guess it's the building permit for them to do the demo in the slab, and then they bring the garage. It's gonna be a small, a little bit higher, but not much.
And, and the, what's the justification for adding eight feet, just for more modern cars, the size of them, than when this was originally built?
We haven't been able to park in it for probably 25 years, because I'm just afraid to put a vehicle in there that's just gonna crush the whole thing down. But I was just gonna use that for like workspace and storage.
Two vehicles and work, workspace.
So the extra eight feet would be for like a little workspace?
Mm-hmm.
Other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like us to know?
No, just, I think we, we're putting a structure on this.
Yeah.
Basically, it's the exact same, and like I said, my neighbor on the other side, we're probably within four feet of his. I move right up to his garage, don on my other side. He, guess like his backyard, my backyard.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Uh, the record will show that there was no one present to testify in favor or against. Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed, and we'll start this one down with Mr. Davy.
I'm inclined to support. Um, I, I'm not totally sure what the hardship is, um, to replace an unsafe structure.
And the fact that it's where it is.
Yes.
Typically, we have viewed existing buildings' relationship to the lot as creating a physical circumstance.
Right.
In case you were wondering about it.
I, I was, yeah.
Oh, I have one more thing to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Extending eight feet still puts us 34 feet from the property line, which is the chain-link fence that the city put in that goes along everyone's backyard.
That's good, okay.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, it's, it's replacing the existing, which is where the existing driveway is, so even if they, where they were gonna try to envision another place for it, there's, maybe they could find another place if they were starting from scratch, but there's, I mean, we're not gonna make them tear up their driveway, so I think the eight feet is, is reasonable, given today's expectations for a homeowner to have a little extra space in their garage, so I think that's a, that's a reasonable use.
Very good. Mr. Monahan?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Waller? And I agree with my colleagues. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've been waiting the longest and taking the longest.
You do. You get a very special sticker.
September originally, so be great.
Thank you, thank you, Dave.
Thank you for your patience.
That's where we got you, the eight feet.
I'm sorry.
That was your eight feet, yeah.
Okay.
We're hoping to get the city council to upgrade stickers to refrigerator magnets, but so far, no luck.
So I move to accept last month's findings on all the cases.
I, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve last month's minutes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Good night.
Thank you for your patience.
Anyone opposed? Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Not yet, sir, please.
Oh.
If I may, Anne Marie Skinner is our new city planner.
Well, we saw the article in the paper.
Speech, speech.
Hello, Anne Marie.
Chris Crowley's our chair. To his right is Andrew Winters, Mark Davy, the nameplates of James Monahan and Nicholas Waller.
Great.
Anne Marie's our new city planner.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you.
To the, uh, city of Concord. Where did you come from, Anne?
Well, I've been here, I've actually been here since October.
Okay.
I was hired as the Assistant City Planner, and then was the Acting City Planner for the last eight months, so it's now.
So it's not an act anymore?
It's not an act anymore.
And we've, we've...
And I came from Oregon.
Oh, great.
And we interviewed a new.
Nice.
We started interviews for a new city planner slash zoning administrator.
Oh, so that'll be the person who ultimately ends up?
Me out of here.
As much as we love having you.
I know, but there is one more element, please. Uh, city solicitor's office is, uh, Andrew asked me a couple of times tonight, did I have enough information for our findings? They are not, um, I guess I'll say, they're not thrilled with how we are doing our findings. When Laura Specter-Morgan, you did the last one, very nice for her, she talked about the five criteria. We really need to stick to that, for every case needs to know what those five criteria are as a statement of fact from this board.
Okay.
So the question is, do you want to have a training session that I bring the solicitor here just to talk about it? Do you want me to just give you a talking point paper on it?
We can't give Laura nights off, that's the...
I don't think it's necessary. We know what the criteria are.
Yeah, we just, but, but don't hesitate to...
I can give you a point paper that says, when you make your motion, we need to talk about these five items.
And I, we know. But don't hesitate to let us not, don't hesitate to tell us, hey, we need more.
So for tonight, what I'm gonna do, and why I said I wasn't worried about it, hopefully tomorrow, I will get your findings done, and if not by tomorrow, by Friday, I'm gonna email them to, and I'd like you to approve them as findings prior to waiting a month for the minutes.
Okay, sure.